One two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to order at this time. I would like to recognize Commissioner Melissa Merrill for the invocation.
Dear Holy Father, thank you so much for this weekend and celebrating you and our Lord and Savior and all of the blessings that have been given to our county, to our state, to our nation. We have gratitude for everything that you have done for us and we hope that everything we say and do here tonight will honor and praise you and the citizens that we work for, in your name I pray, amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Our first speaker, first of all, we recognize the speaker signed up for informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name stating whether they are residents of Union County and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether the same or separate meetings may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Dr. Amanda Stanford.
I'm Dr. Amanda Stanford and I've been a resident of Union County for ten years. I've lived in Indian Trail. While it is debatable, I believe that most data would point to the conclusion that the American education system peaked in the nineteen sixties. It was a tumultuous era, we saw our first Catholic president and the assassination of that president. We went to the moon through a literal cultural revolution that saw riots, public beatings, killings, and the protests of every kind. And yet, most of the civil rights legislation we know today was enacted during that decade. Because intelligent people understand the concepts of fairness and justice are not simple ones that you can attach slogans to. They take thought, reflection, discussion, and information. So it used to be that when people said a phrase like "a means to an end," they knew where it came from. I'll give you a quick history because these days people often say the same phrase to mean two separate things depending on their viewpoint. When Machiavelli wrote about the idea of a means to an end in The Prince in the sixteenth century, he was using the ancient idea of an eye for an eye in that if a goal is morally important enough, any method of getting there is acceptable. Machiavelli also advised rulers if they could be loved by their people, they'd be less likely to be overthrown. But if they couldn't be loved, then the next best thing was to be feared, feared but not hated. But when people talk about a means to an end, they mean it in the way German philosopher Immanuel Kant meant it in the eighteenth century, when he said that rational human beings should be treated as an end in and of themselves and not as a means to something else. The fact that we are human has value in and of itself. If their inherent value doesn't depend on anything, it doesn't depend on whether the person is enjoying their life or making other people's lives better. We exist so we have value, period. We aren't a function, a thing, or a tool to be used to help or hurt. And we shouldn't be weaponized or pressed into service on your behalf for your agenda. I bring this up because there is a mayor in Monroe who, in his capacity as mayor of Monroe, has actively attended protests against the LGBTQ plus community of Monroe and has made statements and given interviews to the effect that, quote, "living this lifestyle isn't a part of Union County values or who we think or who we are." And while standing beside other protesters as he discusses this fact, that he is the mayor and he is in fact there to protest actively against his own citizens' right to live freely in their own city while doing nothing illegal, I might add. In the mayoral race, only nine hundred and seventy people out of a city of thirty-two thousand people voted for this mayor. That is roughly three percent of the population of the city of Monroe. Who exactly does he think he's speaking for? Simply put, in a representational democracy, those who govern represent the whole, not a shows and few. You don't govern the people who voted for you, as perhaps has been said, but a phrase like "a means to an end," this is often misunderstood. You do not govern simply the people who voted for you, you govern all the people in your jurisdiction. This mayor seems to think that the city of Monroe has one type of person in it and that this is the type of person he wants more of. Added to which, even when you make a plan for those few people, say a comprehensive plan, and you don't keep to that plan, a building company makes it sizable enough, let's be generous and call it a gift, although it's certainly not what I would call it. When the same proposal comes up in your land board, the one that you yourselves appointed, you didn't take recommendations, you didn't take the recommendations of your staff, even of yourselves. There is a plan in place of a comprehensive plan. You heard someone speak about it in the last meeting, it's the issue they vote on, it's so important to them. Is our integrity actually worth more than two hundred thousand or is that the price? Because we need to change, we need to stop voting for people who have this letter after their name. There has to be a mayor who is using his office to make Monroe less safe than it is for a large number of people in Monroe. If only nine hundred and seventy people voted for him, that's a problem. A comprehensive plan that can just get pushed out of the way anytime someone wants to rip out a beautiful farm and cram in another squished retirement community for profit is also a problem. Because it's pretty clear we aren't all in the same boat, we are in the same storm. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll go to the next item on the agenda. Item number twenty-four two-ten, Sustained Professional Purchasing Award. I will now recognize Cheryl Wright, Director of Procurement and Contract Management for this item.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager Matthews, leadership and everyone. I am proud to announce this evening that the Union County, well, the North Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing has awarded the two thousand twenty-three Sustained Professional Purchasing Award, also known as the SPPA Award, to the Union County Procurement and Contract Management Department. This is the eighth year that the team has applied and won this award. I would like to take a moment, if you will, because it definitely takes a team and recognize each team member by name and I better not mess up. So we have Mr. Michael, hi, he's a procurement specialist with the team. Ms. Vicki Watts, she is our senior procurement specialist. We have Mr. Eric Purdest, he's a procurement specialist. Mr. David Sifford, he is our procurement and contract management representative. And then we have Mr. Corey Brooks, he's a senior procurement specialist team member. And so this is the team and we appreciate all of their work. I would also like to mention that the SPPA Award is presented annually by the North Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing to member agencies in North Carolina that have demonstrated excellence in purchasing standards during the calendar year. And again, this year, this is our eighth year getting this award. Some of the criteria that the award includes would be technology, minority outreach, staff certifications, customer service, vendor training, and the use of recycled products. All of the departments in the county, we appreciate them very much because we collaborate to get the work done for the citizens of Union County. And so with that, please join me in congratulating the team for their efforts. As the team moves forward, I would also like to congratulate one of our team members, Mr. Corey Brooks. He received his certification, also known as the Certified Local Government Purchasing Certification. And Corey also received the top score on his test with his class. And so I would also like to congratulate Corey for this major accomplishment. He received the Stephen G. Graham Award for having the highest score on his exam this year. Congratulations, Corey. Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item is consideration of the business agenda and consent agenda. Are there any revisions requested to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to move item twenty-four dash two-one-six. That is task order, Architectural Services for Simpson Event Center Support Building. I'd like to move that off of consent. If it's appropriate, we can move that to business section tonight, but ultimately what I'm asking for is for us to table this item until our next meeting, April fifteenth, when staff can present us with some additional details to the board in the business section.
Mr. Vice Chair, if you like, you can make that all in one motion rather than have it be a two-step process.
Thank you, Mr. Kay. So I'd like to make the motion then that we table item twenty-four dash two-one-six, Task Order, Architectural Services for Simpson Event Center Support Building, to be discussed at our April fifteenth meeting where staff can provide additional details.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
We are now at the business portion of the agenda. The first item of business is item twenty-four one fifty-six, Resoning Case Number two-two-zero-two-two CZ zero-zero-nine Dixon Farm. I will note that this item is on our agenda this evening according to the board's rules of procedure. As we are awaiting additional information requested, at the last meeting, we will defer this item until that information is able to be gathered and communicated to the board. If there are no further comments or objections, we will move to the next item. The next matter of business is item twenty-four two-hundred, South Piedmont Community College Capital. I will recognize Dr. Maria Farr, President of South Piedmont Community College concerning this item. Anne Beverly Lyles, the Union County Governor.
Tonight I just wanted to let you know you would be presented a presentation from South Piedmont for their major capital request for fiscal year twenty-five that potentially would lead to a bond referendum request be placed on the ballot in November of two thousand twenty-four. Tonight you will not receive any property tax debt rate models from me. We will follow up with that at our next meeting on April the fifteenth. Tonight, this provides an opportunity for you and the board in South Piedmont to discuss this project in detail and provide any feedback you may have for South Piedmont. And with that, I'll introduce Dr. Maria Farr. Also in attendance tonight with South Piedmont is Michelle Brock, their financial director, and Ryan Anthony, which is their Dean of Public Safety.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners, to the county leadership, and actually for the Union County community to allow us here to present a proposal for your consideration. I'm also very honored to be here in the presence of several members of the Union County Sheriff's Office who understand the dangers that we face as a community and dedicate themselves to keeping us safe. But in order to do that, we need adequate facilities to maintain our excellence in public safety. Can I? Did I screw it up? So, when you dial nine-one-one, it's a community college graduate that responds. The community college is the primary and state-designated provider of training for the law enforcement, fire protection, emergency medical sciences, and paramedic workforce. This training is essential to maintain the lifesaving services for Union County's eighteen fire departments, six law enforcement agencies, two paramedic transport agencies, and one EMS agency. And as the county continues to grow, the need to increase the number of public safety professionals is critical for the health and well-being of our population. These public safety programs require specialized spaces as dictated by their state-mandated training protocols, as well as to ensure the highest quality of preparedness to protect our citizens and provide lifesaving measures in emergency situations. Currently, South Piedmont is dependent upon rental facilities for some of the required training and is using repurposed spaces that are not adequately designed for other aspects of that required training. The time of day that the college is able to rent the Monroe Aquatic Center for basic physical fitness training and utilize Monroe High School limits our ability to schedule additional cohorts and provide the type of specialized physical fitness training unique to public safety. Additionally, the college is using a converted library and mobile units for tactical training, which limits the scope of training and requires constant setup and takedown, which reduces the time available for actual training. Training needs within law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services have also become more technical, sophisticated, and responsive for contemporary situations. The need for advanced training is not possible within the converted space. Therefore, South Piedmont Community College seeks to develop a comprehensive public safety training facility to increase the number of public safety professionals entering the workforce and to enhance the quality of training necessary to prepare our first responders for the contemporary dangers and emergencies that face our community. And as our population grows, the need for additional public safety personnel grows commensurately. Currently, Union County has one point five law enforcement officers per one thousand people. That ratio is far below that of the United States, North Carolina, and the southern states. And in approximately ten years, the population in Union County is expected to grow by eight percent, but public safety employment is expected to grow by nine percent with ninety-six annual public safety job openings. And in addition to providing the workforce training for these open positions, continuing education training will be needed for the vast number of professionals that are already working in the field. However, we're not able to host the full training program for these personnel and we're subsequently forced to limit the timing and the number of programs, thereby reducing the number of personnel that can enter the fields. Last year, we had over twenty-three hundred students enrolled in our public safety courses. And since two thousand eighteen, South Piedmont has experienced a fifteen percent increase in enrollment in public safety programs. However, our ability to continue to grow in order to match the demand and the need to provide specialized training to produce the highest level of safety for our community is limited by our current facilities. Our ability to schedule classes is limited by the physical space and we do not have room for the modern equipment and the training activities. We hope to change this problem by asking for an investment to support the growing need of high-quality safety professionals in Union County. We have identified models from across the state, from other community colleges, which have provided those comprehensive centers for their agency partners. Using a similar site plan based on the most relevant models we considered, we've calculated the square footage to house the specialty spaces and facilities to adequately provide this training to be approximately sixty thousand square feet. The South Piedmont Public Safety Training Center would ideally be located within a ten-mile radius of the majority of public safety agencies and populations served, which would be on South Piedmont's Monroe campus. The sixty thousand square foot facility would house multipurpose and specialty spaces for each of the public of the public safety programs, as you see there on the screen. The new facility would also allow the college to provide specialized training that will enhance the preparation of our first responders. Our current facilities will allow the basic training that is required for these professions, but the need and the demand for higher-end critical rescue, response, and care training would allow our first responses to be self-reliant in their emergency response. So with the clearly identified and growing need for essential public safety jobs in North Carolina and in Union County, high-tech and real-life training is essential to meet the training objectives for today's public safety workers. South Piedmont Community College has been working to meet the challenges of this growing, adapting, and vital sector to create opportunities for North Carolina's protective service personnel to receive the skills that they need to keep us all safe. But the college needs more capacity. Therefore, we hope to be able to build the type of facility that would address the growth and enhance the training for our community. We respectfully request the opportunity to seek bond funding to increase the number and the preparedness of our public safety workforce so that our citizens can rest assured that when they dial 911, the most highly-trained professionals will answer the call. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Farr?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Maria, just one quick question.
Sure.
So, thank you very much for the presentation, by the way. My question is, what type of study was used to determine the 60,000-square-foot facility? Well, I mean, I know that you guys looked at other similar-type buildings, but was there any method to the madness as far as coming up with that size? Can you explain a little bit?
Yes, sir. Sure. We use ADW Architects. They've done a lot of work for us.
Okay.
And it all started with really looking with our safety personnel, our public safety personnel, and asking what is required to get us to the level that we would like to have for our public safety personnel. And through that design, which was designed functionally, amounted to that square footage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Farr.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter of business is item 24-175, Jail Needs Assessment Presentation. I will now recognize Sheriff Eddie Catty for this item.
Thank you for allowing us to come, Commissioners, Manager, and all the staff. It's important that we're here because we want to sort of educate you on the operation of the jail. I know that it's not a question, I don't think it is, that we need to build a jail, so we're not going to go all into the building of the jail. What we're going to do is try to let you figure out what size jail you want to build because you'll make that decision. We won't make that decision. So we want to give you the most important statistics we have. We'll give you a plan to go by. Certainly, we feel that 600-bed jail is appropriate-sized jail, and we're going to put up the... Lieutenant James is going to do that, and we hope to take any questions you have and answer any questions you have, and we all have an understanding of what we're talking about.
Thanks, Sheriff Catty, for giving me this opportunity. Thank you to all the Commissioners and the Board and the county management team for allowing us to be here. Just briefly, I wanted to introduce our support team that are here with us tonight. At some point, I'm sure there's going to be some questions, and if I can't answer those questions for you, I feel confident that somebody on the front row here or on the second row will be able to help us. For those folks that are not with the Sheriff's Office, you just got volunteered, so congratulations. But I'd like to introduce first Chief Deputy Tony Underwood. He'll be speaking to you in just a moment. Chief Deputy Greg Thomas over our administration, Captain Chad Koppich over our Detention Division, Lieutenant James Dennis, who's pretty much the guru of all jail statistics. So glad he's here with us. Mr. Tyler Fundenberg over to the left, and then Ms. Dorothy Thomas back here. She's hiding, but she's a vital... has a vital role in our office, especially when it comes to this process. So, and of course, I can't help but mention the fine law enforcement officers that are in the room tonight providing just basic security for us. So thank you, guys, for being here. As you can see from our first slide, we're going to try to be as efficient with your time as possible. With any questions you may have, feel free to ask those at any time. However, it may be more beneficial to save them for the end, but if it's something that you think needs to be known immediately, please stop me and we'll address it. So whatever you feel more comfortable with. Our Detention Center Vision Plan. So, as you can tell from the title slide, we've got learn from the past, evaluate the present, and prepare for the future. As Sheriff Catty said, we're not going to kind of get into too much of the past because we want to be respectful of your time, but we all know how our current facility was constructed under those circumstances. Everybody's familiar with that here. No reason to rehash that at this point. But throughout the statistics that we're going to provide to you tonight, we're going to evaluate the present. We're going to see where we are, and we're going to tell you what we need or what our projected needs are. And then we hope that throughout this presentation and in the future, we can work together to prepare for the future, to make the best decision that will serve Union County for 20, 30, 40, or even 50 years from now. So getting into our first slide, it's our current detention center and rated capacity. When I say detention center, just for the folks at home, I mean our jail. Some people refer to it as different things. But currently, and this is where, over the last couple of months, we've seen some misinformation get out into the community, so we want to be here to provide detailed, transparent information to help us all get on the same page and make the right decisions. So, total rated capacity for the Union County Detention Center at this point is 264 inmates. So that's a 264-bed facility. According to the jail code, you're considered at your full classification capacity when you're at 85%. So 225 inmates puts us at full for classification capacity purposes. Our average daily population at this point is 235. To take... to stop right there for just a minute, I did want to talk about average daily population. You can see in the chart below that you can see where our average daily population has steadily increased over the past several years. When we talk about average daily population, that is a year-over-year comparison. So what that means is, for instance, today in our jail, we're about 243...
260 total inmates?
We're 260 total inmates, but as far as just in our facility today...
242.
242. So you're seven higher than your ADP at this point. You have what they call in this area of research is called peaking, which means throughout the year, you're going to have times where you exceed your normal ADP. So when you see 235, that doesn't mean that's our max number throughout the year. That's just kind of the average. The square footage of the existing facility is 68,870 square feet, and as I stated below, you can see a steady increase in average daily detention center population. I also wanted to take a moment to mention here about the methods and the measures that we have taken in conjunction with the District Attorney's Office and just other organizations to try to reduce inmate capacity or to reduce the inmate capacity issue. Some of those being where there's two dedicated Assistant District Attorneys currently, and their job is to lower the population of the jail. So your low-level offenses or your lower-level offenders, those cases are often pled out to lower offenses. Those people are then released on probation, and their release time served, whatever the outcome of that case may be. So although that number has not risen, you know, to 250, 260, we've taken several methods to artificially lower that number using in-house, you know, just our in-house abilities. So like I said, the two ADA's are the biggest thing. You've got pretrial release programs that we're currently using to keep our numbers at a manageable level. And most recently, which has garnered a lot of attention, we've just relocated 10 of our inmates to Cabarrus County. So we're doing all we can to manage what we have with the space we have, and we're very proud of our people for doing that. But the jail code at the bottom, jail code changed a couple of years back, and the jail code specifically states we cannot exceed our design capacity. Inmates have to be relocated until population is less than our rated capacity. So when you're looking at total capacity versus rated capacity, you have to... we have to keep that 264 number in mind. And we'll talk more about the need for why the 225 capacity... classification capacity needs are so much lower than our total capacity. We'll get to that in just a moment. So as part of our project and looking into why we're asking for what the space we're asking for is, we used a study that was done on the Union County... our current Union County Detention Center in 2005 by Carter-Goble Associates. They analyzed local criminal justice trends and existing detention operations to forecast the future inmate housing needs for Union County. So the data pulled during this study in 2005 was from 1997 to 2005, Union County-specific data. So this is our homes, this is our county that they pulled this data from. And it's scary how accurate it was, population, and you'll see that here in just a minute. So this study in 2005 estimated that Union County's population would reach 274,000 by the year 2025 and 306,000 by 2030. Our current population, according to the U.S. Census Bureau website, is 256,000. So in 2005, they were pretty spot-on as far as where our population would be in today's terms. And as everybody has... as everybody's aware of in this room, Union County continues to grow because people love living here. So it's a... we project that it will stay in line with these averages. The pertinent data that was collected and analyzed recommended that Union County's detention center should be capable of housing 520 inmates by 2018, or a facility capable of housing 710 inmates should be in place by 2028. The average between those two numbers is around that 600-bed. And we'll show you a chart that kind of gives you a year-by-year timeline in just a moment, but you can kind of start to see, based on those numbers, where that 600-bed number comes from. Also, as we continue through the presentation, I don't want to get beds confused with core. When I say 600 beds or 500 beds or 700 beds, those are simply where people can lay their head. A core has to be large enough to house all your support services, your laundry, medical, program space, inmate processing and release, kitchen. So it's your core... if the decision is made to build a 600-bed facility, your core has to be large enough for your future expansion goals. So we'll talk more about that. Estimated cost of construction for a 710-bed facility in 2005 was 50... just right under $50.5 million. I wish it was still that cheap today, but I think everybody in the room knows it's just not that way. So moving forward, I wanted to talk about the demographics of charges and impact on rated capacity. I'm going to stop here in just a minute because I'm a little partial. I get it. But I think that we've got the finest law enforcement officers in this state, much less this country, working for the Union County Sheriff's Office, and I'm thankful for Sheriff Catty that I get to be a part of it.
Go ahead.
But I'm a little biased. I'll get up here and preach in just a minute, but we... our folks do a fantastic job. And I tell my wife all the time, it's... people love... you know, you ride down the road, and I live down 601, and you see off the sunset and over those fields, it's beautiful, right? And you're like, I'm glad I live here. But I'm even happier that I live here because I know I can lay my head down at night and know I'm safe. We've got great schools, we've got great everything, we've got great infrastructure, and all of that is super-important. But if people can't lay their head down at the end of the night and know that they're... them and their families are safe, well, then they probably don't want to live there. So we're very, very happy that we're able to provide that sense of security for our community. Let me get back on point here. Currently, let's talk about the good work that our folks have done. Currently, there are 101 Part I criminal offenders housed in our detention center. What is Part I criminal offenders? Those are your violent and very serious felony offenses, such as homicide, rape, robbery, serious assaults, felony breaking and entering, burglaries, things like that. So 101 in our facility total. 78 of those offenders have been charged with specifically the crimes of murder, rape, robbery, or, once again, serious assaults. So that takes away the breaking and entering charges there. So as you can tell, out of 240-ish inmates, 260 total, even with the ones that are housed away from our facility currently, many of them are here on very, very dangerous offenses. Those are not people we want on our streets. They need to be held until their court date. Well, let's talk about how that causes an issue for our capacity. These violent offenders are held for longer periods of time. Takes two to four years, on average, to see trial or disposition on a homicide or a serious sexual assault or robbery case. Their bonds in these cases are often very high, so they're not going to make bond on a million-dollar bond or a no bond, or obviously a no bond, but even some... in some cases, a $500,000 bond. They're not going to make bond and get out of our detention center. So we have to feed, clothe, and protect the inmates for, on average, two to four years. This long-term housing, like, once again, ensures our community's safe, but it significantly impacts our capacity needs. In recent cases, and we'll talk a little bit more about it in a minute, but in recent cases, especially homicides, we have charged numerous offenders. And so one homicide case recently generated seven total offenders. And we'll talk about capacity and co-defendants in a moment, but as you can see, seven defendants in a homicide case takes a lot of your bed space very quickly. So what does that mean? Next point, lower-level offenders. Your inmate that's in there, he's a habitual larceny suspect. Every time he or she walks into Walmart, they're going to steal something, or they're going to break into cars that are unlocked. They're a nuisance offender. They're low-level crimes, however, they just continue to commit these crimes, and we continue to have to arrest them. These lower-level offenders are often pled to those lower offenses, and then they're released. And then they go out, and they commit the same nuisance crimes again, and then we rearrest them, and you see how this cycle continues to go. And... but we're having to make that space for those violent offenders. So a DOJ study in 2009 referred to these type of releases as forced releases because you're forcing lower-level inmates out through plea deals in order to make space for your violent offenders. And based on the data... my goodness, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Keep rolling.
I'll try to do better. The data from the federal study in 2009 proved that the recidivism rate for these inmates, these forced-release inmates, was twice... they were twice as likely to be rearrested as an inmate that fully serves their sentence or their time. So once again, what does this all phase out to? Your community, your residents, are the ones feeling the sting of that lower-level offender being released. They're the ones that have to have their property stolen, or, you know, if they leave their car unlocked and they come out and find it's been ransacked in the morning, we can continue to arrest them, but when we don't have the space to house them long-term, it just... it puts us in a bad position. So the inability to hold convicted offenders accountable. Thus far, in 2024, inmates sentenced to weekend confinement for their criminal convictions have been turned away five times due to capacity issues at the jail. What is a weekender? A weekender is a person who's been charged here in Union County with a crime, such as maybe a first offense or second offense, driving while impaired case. They've been found guilty of their crime. They have a family, they hold a job, and the judge, not the Sheriff's Office, the judge in that case says, "All right, Mr. Defendant or Mrs. Defendant, I'm going to allow you to serve 30 days in the Union County Jail, and I'm going to allow you to do it from Friday to Sunday of every week." So Friday night at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, you'll see a whole group of inmates ready to be booked into the facility. Those are our weekenders. And so they're booked in Friday night, and then Sunday night, they're released, and then you'll see them again next weekend until they fully serve their time in our detention center. The capacity needs, so inmates that come in every day have taken all that space. So what we've had to do five times thus far in 2024 is go to the judge and say, "We cannot house these convicted offenders because we don't have the space." So we're actually preventing convicted offenders from serving their time because we just don't have the space to put them. So that's definitely an issue. We need to get the folks in there that have been convicted, because as most of you know, the inmates that are in our facility have not been to trial. They are pretrial inmates, so they've not been convicted. These are actually people that are supposed to be serving time, and we can't allow... or we can't bring them into the facility because there's just no space. So talking about classifications challenges, we have a very... like I said, I'll mention it again. We've got a great group of people that work for us, and we're extremely blessed. We have a classifications team. That classifications team makes sure that the inmate that's booked into our facility just doesn't go into any old cell. If they're rival gang members, if they've got previous history that could cause fights or officer assaults or anything like that, these inmates are housed in a way that keep the inmate safe and the officer safe. If the inmate... safe. If the inmate is in there on a certain set of charges that the other inmates may not like, well, then our classifications teams make sure that they're housed in a safe space. So, co-defendant housing, I mentioned it a minute ago. For example, the homicide case where we charged seven offenders, those offenders cannot be within speaking range of one another. They can't talk on the phone, they can't mail letters to one another, they can't be roommates, because that could prevent successful criminal prosecution of a very, very serious case. So, we have to keep these folks separated and just completely zero, radio silent between those people. They cannot talk. Well, we don't have space to separate seven offenders in different blocks. So, what we've had to do in this case is we've had to trade a couple of our inmates that needed to be separated with other facilities. I know a couple of meetings back, there was talk about Union County Sheriff's Office and our detention center taking in inmates, and then, you know, passing out, not handing out. Passing out, that's a bad word to say, you know what I'm saying. We're swapping inmates with other facilities. That is not a cost to us, it is a one-for-one switch. So, yes, we're not receiving any money from, if, for instance, if we take Stanley County's inmate, we're not receiving money for Stanley for that, but then we're also not sending money to Stanley for taking our inmate. That's used for co-defendant situations and behavioral issues within the jail. Oftentimes, a change in scenery seems to result in a change in behavior. So, that's what we're left with with co-defendant housing, is we're trading inmates, for lack of a better term. Mental health and medical housing. Since 2022, the Detention Center has seen a significant increase in housing inmates requiring special considerations due to mental health or substance abuse issues. And these are just some raw numbers, October 22 to March 24, our current numbers. We've had 227 inmates have been placed on suicide watch. We've had 544 that have been placed on withdrawal protocol. They're withdrawing from some type of narcotic or some impairing substance. And we've had 28 pregnant inmates. They came into the facility pregnant, just so we're clear. So, the part that I wanted to bring out about this, there are these three specific points, is all of these watches, with the exception of the pregnancies, require our officers to do 15-minute supervision rounds. So, if an inmate comes in and they're clearly detoxing from some impairing substance that could, if not properly managed, allow them to have a major health issue or something like that, up to the point of death, an overdose in death, our officers have to be on the job every 15 minutes and on a irregular basis watching these folks. So, as you can see, 544 on withdrawal protocol that stay on there for an extended period of time, that's a lot of work for our people. Currently, our housing space is limited for that. If you have an inmate that's on suicide watch, you cannot put them in a room with another inmate. So, if you have two beds in one room, and you have one inmate in that room on suicide watch, that extra bed is now gone. This is where I wanted to get back into rated capacity versus total classification capacity. Your withdrawal protocols, once again, they're housed alone. Pregnancy, the 28 pregnancies are female blocks, are, we have a very small portion for female medical, but mostly, these inmates are housed in a dorm-style setting, so they don't require single-cell housing. But if there's any major medical issue, then they have to be housed alone. Also, dangerous inmates. If an inmate assaults a law enforcement officer, they're placed on closed security, and often, more often than not, they are single-cell housed, because we don't want another inmate to be housed with them to be at risk. So, jail code states that a licensed physician has to remove an inmate from a special medical or mental health watch. Our medical and mental health professionals often visit other facilities in addition to ours, and it can be seven to 10 days before we get a medical professional into the facility. They see multiple inmates in the same day, and they're the only ones that can remove them from suicide watch or withdrawal protocols. We can't, as law enforcement officers, we're not trained to say, "Hey, this person's good." You know, they're no longer suicidal, or they're no longer detoxing. We leave that up for the medical professionals. We have to, by jail code. So, with a very limited space for medical housing and close observation housing we have, you can see where this would really become an issue if you have 10 people come in in one night, or, yeah, 10 people, 10 inmates in one night, and three of them claim that they want to hurt themselves. We start to run into some real logistical issues. So, as Captain Koppich alluded to a moment ago, we've got 260 inmates. We don't have the space to house 260 inmates. So, what have we done as another way to lower our capacity? We've transferred 10 inmates out to Cabarrus County at a cost of $70 per day. We expect this need to transfer additional inmates to grow and to continue in the near future, because, as Sheriff Kathy and the chief will allude to in a moment, we do encourage our deputies and detention officers, detention officers, to be very proactive. We believe that they're out there working, they're protecting the people, and that's what the people want to see. They want to see the police taking care of other people and securing their communities. So, we can't stop enforcing the law. We have to keep Union County safe by being proactive. So, we do expect this need to transfer additional inmates in the near future to grow. So, continued classifications challenges, confinement space designated for handicapped inmates is limited due to current facility design. So, we do have handicap-accessible space within the jail, but it is very, very limited. It is, there, once again, you can't just put an inmate that has certain medical or health needs in any type of cell. You can't put a handicapped person in the cell and tell them the top bunk is where you'll be sleeping. It's not going to work. So, space is very limited. Rising female inmates. 2018, 2019, the average number of females that were processed into our detention center was approximately 15 per month. In 2022, the average number rose to 52 per month. In 2023, the average was 57, and we're on track to increase again this year. So, you can see that the population of female inmates has nearly tripled, if not a little bit more. Now, does that mean that all female inmates stay with us? No, it does not. But our dedicated female inmate space is also limited because it is that dormitory-style housing. So, we can fill up, and we're pretty close to filling up in female housing, as it sits. Currently, the existing detention center does not have the space to relocate inmates while repairs and upgrades are being made. This will require us to transfer roughly 40 to 50 inmates out at a time to other facilities while these repairs or renovations are in process. Cost estimate on that, we have to relocate an entire block of male inmates, which is average of 40 to 50 inmates per block, would be $105,000 a month, at a cost of $70 a day, or $3,500 per day for the inmate group. But that's at a cost of $70 per inmate per day. Educational rehabilitation programs. So, this is another, it's another method that we're using to try to increase our proactivity on decreasing recidivism. Safer Community Ministries, Sheriff Kathy's a huge supporter of this group. They're in our jail, and they're doing a life skills program. Inmates are actually relocated out of the big blocks into a dedicated housing unit, where Safer Communities, man, I cannot talk, Safer Communities Ministries comes in, and they teach classes every day. These classes are, they provide chaplaincy services, Bible studies, spiritual guidance. They also include addiction recovery, anger management, goal setting, budget development, and job preparation. They teach these folks how to fill out job interview, job applications, and sit for job interviews. So, in addition to trying to get them on the right track spiritually, trying to offer that support there, many that are in there for narcotics charges, or, you know, they've just made some bad decisions, they're trying to get them on the right track. So, if we can get them to graduate and help them get a job, hopefully, they won't come back to our jail. And we've seen successes in the past where a lot of inmates have left the jail, and they've done so well that they've started other organizations or programs themselves. And a lot of this, they give the credit back to the programs within the jail. So, Safer Communities Ministries is huge for us. They have an 85% success rate on our graduates. So, this is something that we would like to expand. However, our current space, once again, the priority is getting the dangerous inmates off the street, and that space is dedicated to that, not increasing our program space. Other rehabilitation and diversion programs are not able to be introduced into the detention center based on the space available and rated capacity restrictions. I use the example here, the South Piedmont GED program, which produced 10 graduates, was discontinued based on rated capacity needs and minimum class size requirements. So, in order for that class to be worth hosting, as far as a class size large enough to make it worth everyone's time and effort, we don't have the space to house those inmates to dedicate to that program. Once again, all your space is being diverted to getting violent offenders off the street. Inability to introduce new programs significantly hinders our ability to proactively address and lessen our recidivism rate. Some people, we would much rather, and I tell people all the time, we would much rather offer somebody help than a set of handcuffs. If somebody's suffering with addiction, we would much rather them seek rehabilitation and help. But oftentimes, you just have to, the people will not seek help or accept help, and they end up ultimately being arrested, and we've got to have a place to put them. So, once we get them in the door, hopefully, we can, you know, use the program in place to get them on the right track. But the goal would be to expand these in a new facility. So, these are pending or active repair and renovation costs. You've all seen the videos and the pictures of the existing detention center and the issues that it has, and I won't, I won't take any of your time to go back through that. But as you can see, we're looking at about a $6.5 million estimate on current projects that are taking place. So, this is to an existing detention, this is not to expand any current space. This $6.5 million will not add one bid to the Union County Detention Center. It will just simply keep the place maintained and able to pass jail inspections, which I'll give credit to our detention staff. They have continued to pass jail inspections even with some of the repairs that need to be made. So, they're doing a great job. But as you can see, it's very costly to maintain the building we have. So, this is the chart from the Carter Goble 2005 Space Needs Assessment that I showed, or that I talked a little bit earlier on. You can see the years at the bottom. 2024, the green line with the, the green line right there in the middle is the recommended planning average for inmate housing. So, 2024, it's got us at 615, and in 2030, it recommended a 750-bed facility. So, that's year-over-year, and that was, once again, based off solely off data from Union County. Union County's population, Union County's crime trends, and this study has been pretty spot on with everything. So, once again, where do we get the 600 number from? Well, 2024 on that study shows that we're supposed to have 615 beds. So, that's a, that's a lot of where that number comes from. This is a pretty telling chart as far as population comparison and detention center size. The gold line is the detention center size. The black bars are the capacity, or, I'm sorry, the number of citizens in the county listed below. So, as you see, Union County is just right above 250,000 residents. However, our detention capacity is just below 300. Whereas, our neighboring counties, such as Cabarrus, they're, you know, in the 500 to 600 range. Like I said, I won't take the time to read the chart, but you can, you can see that we're the smallest, that we have the smallest bed space in a county our size, which is concerning. And I'm going to turn it over to Chief Deputy Tony Underwood to talk a little bit about public safety impacts, so.
All right. Good evening. So, I won't take very much of your time at all. I think Lieutenant May has hit on a lot of very important points and things to consider when we talk about jail needs and jail space and concerns, and how this may impact our agency. And being mindful of the fact that the sheriff's office is the only detention center in the county as it is in every county in North Carolina. So, when we're restricted on bed space and total capacity, this affects every law enforcement agency. So, some of these considerations would also affect the Monroe Police Department, the Stallings, Waxall, Marshall, and Wingate, and their ability to go out and be as proactive as perhaps they would like to be. And just to further expand on some of the things that Lieutenant May spoke about earlier, the things we have done to strategize with the District Attorney's Office and the Board of Commissioners and previously funded a couple of assistant DA positions to help keep that jail capacity below that rated level. So, they've worked to identify people they could potentially work through the court system and get them out of the jail to make bed space available for your more violent offenders. That's just one of the many strategies that we've utilized to include working with our magistrates. I know a lot of times when we are very transparent with the community on significant arrests, things that have a big community impact, we like to publicize that information so that our residents know what we're doing. We're out here working, and we're doing the job that they expect us to do. So, we want them to know, you know, what we're out here accomplishing. But some of, some of the challenges that creates is they will question, "Well, why is their bond so low? Why did this person get a $2,500 bond or a $5,000 bond?" We agree, but it's not the magistrate's fault, or in some cases, even the judge's fault, because they're having to be cognizant of that capacity concern that occurs within the jail. So, it affects everyone in the criminal justice system, not just law enforcement. So, we're all impacted by that. But I wanted to just talk about this one slide for just a moment, then I'll hush. But there are a lot of proactive initiatives that this agency, in particular Sheriff Kathy, has been so successful. And part of his strategy and philosophy in his 20-plus years of service as the sheriff of this county has been, our agency is very proactive. Now, what does that mean? It means that we go out and we, we don't just react when that 911 call is dispatched to us, a call for service. We go out, we look for potential crimes in progress. We're out in the communities, we're stopping cars. We're out doing programs, we're doing sex offender compliance checks. We're doing things to identify potential crimes that could affect the community, and we try to hold those offenders accountable. That's proactive police work. That's one of the greatest things that we can brag about in Union County that makes it such an attractive place to live is our low crime rate. I'm very proud of the fact that I've been going to our local municipalities, those that contract police services through the sheriff's office, and we like to do our year-end report card for them. We continue to be well below the national and state average for our violent crime rate, property crimes, and we go out and we show our self-initiated calls versus our calls for service, those that are dispatched following a 911 call. Those self-initiated calls is where that proactive police work rests. That's where those numbers come into play. That's what keeps this crime rate very low. Some of the things that are included within that, these impaired driver checkpoints. Now, we do them. We have a, we have a very, you know, well-trained sheriff's alcohol field enforcement team, we call them, that goes out here. They're looking, they're looking for impaired drivers. Now, they go out, they do a great job at finding these individuals and taking them off the streets and potentially saving lives. But we're limited in the number of checkpoints that we could actually do, because we'd probably catch a lot more people if we were more proactive in doing that. But we have to be mindful of our jail capacity issue, that we have to be concerned about that. If we do a lot of these, we arrest a lot of people, we don't have anywhere to put them if they're, if they're, you know, placed in the jail. And I mentioned the sex offender compliance operations. Now, we have currently 311 registered sex offenders in Union County. We're required to do, you know, checks on those individuals to make sure they're, they are where they're supposed to be, they're not living within 1,000 feet of daycares or schools, and that they're living at the residence where they're reporting to us that they actually live. We could be more proactive in that area if we had more jail space, because I'm sure we would find some that are not in compliance. Fugitive apprehension operations. So, we could go out and potentially arrest more individuals who have outstanding criminal processes against them if we have more space to house them. We're also looking for ways where we can issue citations in lieu of a physical arrest. That is, if it's a misdemeanor-level offense or infraction, where a citation is appropriate, instead of arresting an individual and taking them in front of a magistrate. And the last issue here is something that I don't know that we've spoken a lot about, is the Pre-Trial Integrity Act. This went into effect October 1, 2023. And essentially, what that means is there are a lot of your more violent crimes now. I think there's 18 in particular, where if charged, then that individual is held under no bond. The magistrate cannot set bond until they appear in front of a judge. The judge may still not set bond. They may leave it as no bond. Now, those are your first-degree murders and a lot of your violent crimes, but the magistrate has no discretion whatsoever to say, "Well, we have a jail, you know, capacity issue, so we need to let this person, you know, have a potential..." know, capacity issue, so we, we need to let this person, you know, have a potential to make bond. The magistrate can't do that. The judge can later, if appropriate. And in addition to that, a second phase, a second part of that Pretrial Integrity Act is if a person is already out of jail for a previous charge, a criminal arrest or offense, even if it's a trespass, and they're out and have not yet been through the court system, that case is still pending, and they get arrested for another violation, there's a mandatory 48-hour hold before they can go in front of a judge. It's almost like a domestic violence case. So that does affect our inmates, the number of inmates that we are required to house. So there's a lot of these, you know, situations that are beyond our control that we're having to accommodate for, given the growth of this county. And one of the things that's offset that, I need to mention, is the Raise the Age Law that went into effect in December 1, 2019. Arguably, it's one of the worst laws the state of North Carolina's ever passed. But what it says is, is that 16 and 17-year-olds charged with a criminal offense, we, we can't house them in an adult facility. That's up to Department of Juvenile Justice, and if a secure custody order is issued, they have to go to a juvenile detention facility. We don't have one of those in Union County. So they're not even brought into our jails anymore. So, that's my portion of this presentation. So I'll turn it back over to Lieutenant May. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And for a conclusion before any questions, I'm going to turn it back over to Sheriff Eddie Kathy.
Well, as you can see, the jail is not as easy to know what's going on down there. It's a complicated operation down there that takes a team that organizes it and runs it. Certainly, we feel like the beds, bed space that we're talking about is sufficient. The things we're doing is to help this county, so if, we'd like to take any questions that you might have, that you want to ask, or anything you want to ask.
Sheriff, is the, I was noticing that chart earlier on some of those other counties. Do you know of Cabarrus County, how new their facility is when it was built?
2019. Okay.
And do you know what the capacity of that facility is? Any other questions for the sheriff, for any of the other Sheriff's Offices?
The, yes, Mr. Chairman, the GED program that was discontinued due to space, do you know when that GED program was discontinued?
This, this recently, this year.
Okay.
It actually, they want to have it, but we just don't have the space for it, and there's a lack of interest in the people that's eligible for that. We have 40-some that's charged with murder down there now at this time. That's a large number in this county. And so you've got to treat them all different. But that GED program was a good program, graduated 10, but they just can't run it anymore.
And my, my back of the envelope calculation told me it was about, about 43% of your Part I felons make up your total capacity. Does that sound about right?
That's about right.
43%?
That's close.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ball.
Eddie, I, I hear a lot of talk about the structure itself as failing, like it just, maybe the soil that was built on or the footings were not correct. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Oh, yeah. It was built with court order in 1994. It was built on a pattern that the builder had. It was built as quick as they could build it, because if you remember, they had to rent space over here in the old supermarket, and where the school system's at now. And they made a jail out of it because they had to get them out of the courthouse, the government center. And so, over the years, what's happened is they didn't take time to build in cleanouts for the cells, and so when you have to shut, when it floods a cell, it runs in the floor and shuts the whole cell down, shuts the water system down. Now the water system is bursting. They, we have to put trash cans under it to catch water that's coming out of the ceiling. I will say this, facilities has worked theirself to death to try to correct that. It's a lot of things. You see $250,000 to put a sewer screen, screen in there. Just, I won't even tell you about that, but it's, it's falling apart. If you go from the jail, from the office to the jail, it's dropped, I'm going to say six inches, and we tried to have an engineer come in there. We did have an engineer to come in there, and he said, you'd have to, you had to go 18 feet to get solid ground. That's pretty unbelievable, but they just packed, poured in there and packed it in there, didn't pack it in there. But, and the jail, back of the jail is, and in all fairness to the commission that was there then, they didn't have time to plan anything. They built the jail because the judge said, either you build it or I'll build it. And now, the floodplain has moved up to where it's taken in, close to the back part of the jail where you can't add on to even the back part of the jail. So, but the jail is actually falling apart, and all we're doing now is, I'm going to, I haven't looked at the exact numbers, but I'm going to say $6 million, $7 million a year to maintain that operational. And it's been that way for several years. It's, it's in bad shape. It's just, it's got to be, we've got to build a jail. Size off, you ought to decide that. Well, you can decide to build one if you want to, but it's falling apart. Our officers come in on their days off and paint in there to just get the scrapings off the, off the wall and to keep it where we can pass inspections, and it's a, it's a big deal.
Sheriff, first of all, thank you, appreciate you and all of your staff being here. Lieutenant May, Chief Deputy Underwood, thank you very much. Yeah, I don't think you're going to find anybody that would argue and say that Union County doesn't have the, the best folks protecting us of any place in this state. So thank you for the job that you guys do. You know, I know we didn't spend a lot of time talking about the history of the jail, but I think it's important that we look at kind of where we, where we were and now where we are. And so, and so with that, I got a couple of comments and I got some questions for you guys.
Go right ahead.
So, the current jail was built in 93, and currently it is just over 30 years old. And if I understand correctly, we started, as a county, we started looking at jail expansion probably about '03, '04, about 10 years after the completion of, of the jail. About '05, '06, and you guys touched on this in your presentation, there was a master plan that was created that basically assumed that we were going to need 581 beds with growth projections. And I understand, you know, at that point in time, Union County was booming. I mean, you had tremendous growth in this county, and to some degree, we still have that now. Then, let's see, we've got 2007, there was a schematic design that was made, that included a second floor with potential for, you know, 911 communication call center type, types, type thing. Then we had, in '07, you had the jail population starting to decline. So as I understand it, the, any kind of project for jail expansion was kind of put on hold at that point because of a combination of factors. So you had that, and then you had deteriorating financial conditions. Let's see, 2009, so you had the inmate population starting to come, come back up. So at that point in time, the board and Union County staff started looking at this whole thing again. So as I understand it, we conducted significant analysis of the current site, and then we started also looking at, about that time, City Monroe's facilities, because they were going to close this down, as if I, if I recall correctly, they were going to close this whole thing down. The county started looking at what it was going to take to potentially use that space as additional capacity for jail cells, and that would have housed about 80 inmates, and the project cost would have been about $4 million. That was in January of 2010, so $4 million for about 80 cells. Bottom line is, is it was original, or it was eventually considered to be not cost-effective for the county, so we, we declined to pursue that. Then, fast forward from about 2010, then in 2018, we had the bond, obviously, for the new Sheriff's Office and the new emergency communications, communications building. And then that was completed about 2022. So that's kind of where we are currently. The questions I've got is, you know, now we're looking at a jail, a new jail potentially, that would double the size of the current facility. So, I mean, we're looking at doubling the bed count, correct, and, and also the square footage. That's what's being proposed. And, you know, we're basing this off of a study that has probably been tweaked and looked at, but the, the bread and butter here becomes that 2005, 2006 study, correct? Where we, where we sort of, sort of looked at about 600 beds or so, and that's kind of what we're basing this number off of.
That study and the statistics provided by our folks that are in the boots on the ground every day, they keep the statistics, they turn them every year, so.
Sure.
Several.
Sure. I've got a little bit of concern, just looking at a study that's 20 years old, you know, and banking $150 million on a study that's 20 years old. Looks like to me, if we outlawed crime, we wouldn't be in this situation, you know? Totally kidding. But my concern is, not only are we looking at a study for, that's almost 20 years old, but if we're doubling the size of the jail, yeah, at this point, we're just talking about capital cost. So this is only capital. This is just for a new facility. This is not counting the land acquisition, which we've already done, okay? But this is just for the capital cost of that building. I don't know if this is including washers and dryers for laundry, I don't know if this is including pots and pans or anything like that, or beds, or linens, or whatever. But my question is, if we double the size of the facility, how many more COs are going to be needed to staff that? Because if you're taking in twice the prison population, right, the inmate population, how many officers do we have currently, and how many will we have to hire to, you know, maintain the, the safety of that facility in the event that we were housing close to 600 inmates?
All right, let me, I'll take that, and let me go back just a little bit to 2005. I took office as sheriff in 2002, we had approximately 350 or more inmates in that jail, sleeping them on the floor, sleeping them wherever you could find them, they could throw a mattress on a cement floor. And we moved on, and that's when the study started, in 2005, because we were out of jail space. Sometimes we get up pretty high, I mean, that's high, but we didn't have a jail inspector that was limiting our jail space. We, where now, we have to comply with the maximum capacity. We didn't have that back then, so we could just sleep them wherever we could throw a mattress. It wasn't much different, and to be honest with you, it wasn't much different than them iron beds, throwing that mattress on in the cement floor. But a lot of times in the two-man cell, we'd have three and sometimes four in there. Then we moved on to 2005, took, did that study, and then they decided, well, let's hold off, let's just don't do it now, let's just hold off. Then we moved up to 2009, 2010, that's when we started figuring out that the office at the, we were in is falling in a hole. And we wasn't going to be able to fix it, wasn't going to be able to do anything with it. So that's when the decision was made to put that on a bond referendum for the public to vote on it, and they voted to build that thing. Had nothing to do with the jail, other than it was falling in, and we still had a lot of the problems down there. But since that time, the jail has deteriorated over, I mean, it's, you've seen all the, the stuff that's coming down, falling out of the ceiling, have changed trash cans to take your, the water out and all those things that's going on in the jail. So that's what it is. The 2005 study, if you look at how it's followed the same population, when they built that jail, there was around 115,000, somewhere in there, people in the county. They built that jail without doing any studies whatsoever. They just said, we need to build it to the size that we think it should be built, and to accommodate that number of inmates. It wasn't, they wasn't looking for the future, they wasn't looking down the road, and they wasn't saying, we don't want to come back in 10 years, which we should have done 10 in 2005, 2000, in that timeframe. But they did, they went ahead and built it, and they didn't think about the pub, the county growing like it was going to grow over the next year. So, I just don't want us to look back in 10 years and say, hmm, we're going to have to add on to this jail. We're going to have to add something else, because we, to be honest with you, we can't add trailers. You, you've got to add friggin' mortar.
How, how about tents, does that work?
No, you can't put tents up.
Well, well, again, but the question though, and, and thank you, I appreciate the, the perspective. I guess what I'm focused in on though is, is as far as the officers, you know.
Well, I just hadn't got to that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go, go ahead, Sheriff.
The number of officers, we've still got the same population. Of course, now you do realize, you're going to put this on a bond, that'll be November. If it passes, that'll be another three years before we, before you start, be a year before you start building the jail. Two years to build it. So you're talking about, you know, four years. If it gets turned down by the public, which it might, then you're looking at pushing it back another two or maybe, according to how the institute of government decides to let us build it then. So you're looking at four or five years down the road that you'll be staffing and building. Number of inmates in that jail is not going to change, but gradually, as we go down the road. Number of officers we got into jail now will handle the same amount. Now, we'll probably have to add a few as we go, to add, to supplement it as we go, but we won't have to add enough for 600 beds. So somewhere on down the road, all those beds are not going to be used. They'll be used for different things, for repairs, move them into it, for have repairs, do all kinds of things, but they won't be moved into or have beds that occupy people more than our capacity.
Okay. So, so what you're suggesting then is that this would be a progressive addition.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no question about it.
Sure. But has anybody looked at, you know, if we were nearing that 600-bed capacity, how many more officers would we have to hire?
Roughly currently right now, we have 62 officers, 63, excuse me, in the building. For 600 beds, you would look at anywhere between 50 to 60 additional officers. But as the sheriff said, that would be crazy.
Sure. Sure. Thanks, sir, appreciate that. So Sheriff, let me ask you this, there's been a lot of discussion, this has come up a time or two, about housing federal prisoners in Union County at this new facility. And I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand, okay? And so, it's great that all you guys are here, because number one, we feel awful safe up here with you guys. There's a lot of you. So, so, but let me just say this, though, what I'm trying to understand is, is that if we're entertaining the thought of federal prisoners and bringing federal inmates into this new facility, you know, what's the av- prisoners and bringing federal inmates into this new facility, you know, what's the advantage for Union County? Is this profitable for Union County to do so?
It's it's all profit for Union County. The inmates have no civil liability. The federal government takes all the liability, takes all the cost whatsoever, and they are white collar criminals if we want to take them. Now, we've not negotiated any kind of cost. They'll pay somewhere starting around a hundred and fifty dollars a day for the other agencies around to house them. Like, I saw Gastonia's housing them and All Around is housing them. So, it's, there's, these are white collar crimes. They'll actually make good inmates in our jail to volunteer to do things in our jail that we don't have now, we just can't have, we don't have a place for them, trustees. And you won't take, God, know he's on this thing.
I was just going to expand on what what he just said concerning the housing of federal inmates. The United States Marshal Service essentially contracts with a lot of local jails. They don't have federal jails. They have federal prisons after conviction. They don't have federal jails to house pretrial offenders. So, they have to contract with jails that have bed space available, who are willing to accommodate those individuals. They're not treated any differently than any other state level inmate. No different, they're not any difference in classification, they're just co-mingled with your other inmates. Essentially, the housing of federal inmates is actually a smart business model, if you had bed space to accommodate. For example, if you house twenty or more, you can negotiate that rate somewhat with the Marshal Service up to, I think their average rate's about one fifty to one seventy-five a day per inmate versus the state misdemeanor confinement program is currently forty dollars a day. So, it's it's a huge revenue string potential for the county. And if they are, when they go to court appearances, there's no federal court in Union County. The closest federal court facility is in Charlotte. If they meet conditions of release, they have to go to the federal clerk's office to then be released in Charlotte, not here. They would never be released in Union County. They don't hire a bail bondsman and make bond out of the Union County Jail if they're a federal inmate. They have to go through the federal court system and see a federal clerk before that would happen. So, it's just, that's kind of what you're looking at, is it was more of an opportunity, as as they mentioned, this progressive, you know, movement towards filling a potential six hundred bed facility. If you had bed space available, it's a huge revenue potential for the county to offset operating costs.
Blayton County turned in a million dollars last year in a two hundred bed jail to the county. And if the money that's coming back doesn't come back to the sheriff's officer, we don't divide it up, it comes back to the general fund to pay the bills.
And those inmates are transported not by our people, but the Marshal Service picks them up, transfers them to court.
According to how you sign the contract. And if if our people do transport them, then they pay for everything. They pay them to do it off duty and pay the mileage on the vehicle.
I do, I do want to clarify something. I don't want anyone to think that the study was built around a number that contemplated housing federal prisoners.
No.
That that was not the case. It was about what was the future need for Union County ultimate inmates. What Sheriff and Tony are talking about is an opportunity if there's space. I want to make sure everyone understood this, the number was not built on having federal prisoners in there.
No, has, so nothing to do with the federal prisoners.
If I could say one more.
Yes, sir.
Remark about that. We've been approached over the last several years by the Marshal Service, asking us to consider housing federal inmates, specifically female prisoners. And we just don't have the bed space to take, and we'd like to, because it's it's basically free money for us to do that, but we just don't have space to do it currently. But, then that's where that conversation was was expanded upon, was the potential of a new detention center at some point. Could we then accommodate federal inmates? And that was where the conversation began.
And I appreciate, I really do appreciate the clarification, because, you know, when we first started talking about this, I think there was some question about, you know, what level of offender we were going to potentially be bringing into the county. And so, is there, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to ask you is, you know, you guys mentioned that you're talking about white collar type criminals. That would be negotiated, I'm assuming, or there'd be certain levels of security that would be required for more violent offenders, correct?
Well, most of your, ninety-plus percent of your crimes that people associate, we house them already, murders, those are state crimes.
Right.
There's not a lot of federal crimes that are violent. There are some, I mean, a lot of gun crimes that would that would be considered a federal crime in some instances. A lot of drug crimes, there are white collar criminals that are charged on a federal level. But, you don't have, your your largest composition of offenders are going to be state level offenders. That's where your violent state crimes are, your murders, your rapes, your robberies, those are state crimes.
And just to be clear, I want to make sure I understood you correctly. So, if that were to occur in the future, let's say that this facility, you know, presses forward, we get this thing completed, and and we start looking at this. So, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that the existing COs or any new COs that we would hire would not require any kind of additional training?
No.
Just because we were having federal inmates?
No.
Okay.
It actually wouldn't even add to the workload of the of the inmates, other than just feeding them meals.
Okay. One last question, I promise.
You can go out of here.
Well, well, I mean, I think it's important that we discuss this, you know, because because this is a lot of money that we're talking about.
I think it is too. It's important.
And ultimately, you know, we've said this before, I've said it before, you've said it before, it's difficult to put a price, you can't put a price tag on public safety, period. But, with that, you know, there also comes a responsibility to the taxpayer, and we have to make sure that we're being responsible with taxpayer dollars. You guys understand that, I know.
Oh, we do.
And so, my question is, is with the existing facility, you know, the problems with the existing facility, the current jail are well documented. You know, you guys were here middle part of last year, I want to say it was around May, and you guys showed us that presentation, you showed us images, videos, all that. Is there any part of the existing structure that can be salvaged in any way? I mean, maybe it's for animal control, maybe it's for, you know, juvenile detention center, maybe it's for something else that maybe we have a need for. And if this, if it can't be salvaged, any portion of that facility, if it can't be salvaged, have we looked into the cost of what is going to be the, yeah, the, yeah, well, the tearing down that facility, basically? I mean, because that's not going to be free either.
We've not looked at that, and we've not discussed tearing down that facility. I don't see it being used for anything other than storage, maybe. There might be some storage you can use where you don't have running water, you don't have commodes, working commodes, things like that, but I don't see it being renovated to use very, I don't think any of it, to be honest with you. The kitchen, maybe, but we don't, we won't need the kitchen if we build a core big enough to handle the beds. And we would hope that's part of the plan to do that. But, the kitchen, we're going under a new kitchen contract down there that actually cooks the the elderly meals offsite. They cook it at their own kitchen. So, they won't even use that anymore. So, I don't, I don't, I can't think of anything we could use it for, other than storage.
It would be used for any type of detention. And as Lieutenant Dennis mentioned earlier about the additional staff needed, it would be a new jail code, so you'd have to basically double your your current staff, one to operate under the existing jail code, and then a new one to operate under the current jail code. So, it would be difficult, and we've already repurposed, you know, what was the administration building previously in front of the current jail, and we're using pretty much all of that existing space, you know, for training and some of our simulators and office space now. But, the jail portion, the back part of that building is what's, you know, is failing. That's where the significant failure is taking place. It's not so much the front side as the back side.
Well, I mean, even if we could renovate it into offices, I mean, something. I mean, we have a need for that in the county as well, which you guys know. But, I mean, it just seems like, the problem that we're dealing with here is you've got a thirty-year-old facility, you know, and and it's very difficult, I think, for the general public, as well as for a lot of us up here on this board, to wrap our minds around, you've got a thirty-year-old building that's failing, you know?
That's true.
And, and, I mean, it was thirty years ago when this thing was built. Why is it that we have to replace it now thirty years later? This thing should last longer.
We totally agree with you, but just like you asked about the water lines, they just put the water lines on the dirt, covered them up, and now their dirt is crumbling. So, now the the cellist is going in there, have to dig them all the way up, drain lines same way. There's a lot they didn't do, they didn't prepare to build that building like it should have been. James is a jail expert.
Also, one, to answer your question a little bit better.
Thank you, James.
Within thirty years, yes, sir. This, oh, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't do no public speaking, I apologize, I'm a jailer. That building's ran twenty-four seven. Most of our, the county buildings are, you know, they're closed, they're only operating Monday through Friday, eight to five. Me and my and my staff are in there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And the inmates, they don't take care of the building like we do in our office buildings. So, they damage things, they constantly try to tear up things, so it can be, can weigh on the building more than your average office space.
Thank you.
But, I'll tell you, you went through the same thing with here at the government center. These jock, these bars that are in there are structural supports. You can't take them out. Well, that's the same thing. What are you going to do with all the bars down there? I mean, you just can't renovate that old building. I mean, if you wanted to stick somebody down there, you could, but probably wouldn't be a real good thing.
You'd probably have to let them out.
Yeah.
I hate to say it that way, but you would, you'd have to pop the doors individually.
I've waited patiently.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I do have some questions, and and you may want to go back to a previous slide, or you can just trust my notice. So, in between twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, you increased by nineteen, average daily incarcerations, okay? I know it can be higher than that, and you even mentioned, you know, being around three hundred. So, I do understand average. But, in this year, if you're using two hundred and thirty-five, or let's just, I think your presentation a few months ago was two forty as an average daily incarceration. If I take those numbers and fast forward to twenty thirty, that would put us around two hundred and sixty-five, two hundred and seventy average daily incarcerations around twenty thirty. So, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Hems that I have grave concerns about a twenty-year-old study, because in twenty twenty-three, that study estimated that your average daily incarcerations would be five ninety-six. Okay, so a six hundred bed jail sounds reasonable, right? Except in twenty twenty-three, our average daily incarcerations were two thirty-two.
You won't take this?
Just when you finish, just when you finish, whatever.
And, you know, so, over the last several months, you know, we've heard the campaigning through the community for a six hundred bed jail to take in federal inmates.
Not from us, you had.
So, with that being said, you know, I've heard that there have been juveniles in our community that are being, that are committing serious crimes.
Terrible.
That are being sent home to mom and dad because we don't have space for juveniles, or where we would send juveniles is out of space. So, again, I'm going back to this, you know, a lot has changed since COVID, and juvenile crimes has significantly increased since COVID. And we have that in our community. So, with it, so with my concerns with a twenty-year-old study, I do question, what would that study be post-COVID? What new information would that consultant bring to us in a post-COVID recommendation to Union County? I think it would be very different. And so, I am concerned that there is such a push for free money for federal inmates when we're being told that this would require a huge tax increase on on the backs of our citizens to earn free money on a business model, when our true need might be juvenile cells. So, I'll, I'll just let you tell me, you know, was the study correct, that in twenty twenty-three, you would need five hundred and ninety-six beds when you, when your average daily incarceration was two thirty-two? Post-COVID, I think we have a juvenile crime thing. I don't feel safe sending some of these juvenile crimes home to mom and dad, and I know that's happening. So, I'll let you speak to that.
Okay. Let's just try two or three different ways.
Okay.
Just to hold off on the juvenile stuff.
Okay, sure.
The federal inmate has never been an issue. I heard that when I read it in the paper. I mean, I, we've talked about it, I think I might have even mentioned it to Brian. I don't know what I have, but that's not a plan to build the jail, the federal inmates is not. If we don't take them, we've not lost anything. But, to be honest, we, if we have a chance to take a federal inmate, that's nothing but paying the county back money. So, it'd be foolish to have empty beds in that jail and not take the money for a federal inmate that doesn't cost the county anything, no medical, no, no liability, no nothing. So, but now, let's go back to juveniles. We can't have a juvenile facility. That's a state-run facility that, by the way, I got a email today that the state is full across the state for juveniles. They don't have any beds available for juvenile. We agree with you, but we can't have it. If we have a, if we could get the state to approve a juvenile detention center, then it's got to be a completely separate center, under a completely separate roof, completely separate staff, that's got to be specifically trained, and it's got to have a teaching, teachers that teach in there. So, for us to take on a separate juvenile facility, we just, we're, I don't think we can do that.
Okay, I really appreciate you sharing that with me. So, let's go back to the study that estimated five hundred and ninety-six beds in twenty twenty-three, and our average daily incarceration, two thirty-two, because I would feel foolish building a six hundred or eight hundred bed if by twenty thirty, we were around, I'm just going to be very generous here with your numbers, and say three sixty-five. So, and the number truly, if this trend continues, would be two sixty-five, but I I'm just going to say three sixty-five because of, you know, we're sending some to Cabarrus currently, so I'm just going to round it up. So, do you feel comfortable with a twenty-year-old study? I think it was, we were put under the gun in nineteen ninety-three and ninety-four to build a jail haphazardly. I feel kind of foolish with the numbers I've been given tonight to say, yeah, let's do an eight hundred bed jail with the numbers you've presented. I, I'm just concerned, but it would give you the beds to bring in federal.
Let me tell you something, you've got, you've got to put that out of your mind.
I'm not, because your numbers are not, I, I'm worried about the numbers that I've gotten tonight.
Oh, yes. James, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Sorry, sir. To kind of answer a little bit of your question, over the time that I've been down there, a lot of problems jails have, other jails have too. So, one of the things we do is we reach out to other jailers to see how they've done things. One thing I've learned that Cabarrus County did very, very well was One thing I've learned that Cabarrus County did very, very well was, ten years ago, they built a building twice, three times what they needed, and they've grown into it over the past. Um, and in doing so, they still have open housing units today. That does a couple of things. One, it was cheaper to build back in two thousand and ten, like you saw. Now, that building would probably be double what it costed. Two, it allows them to offset some of those running operation costs by bringing in other county inmates, other federal inmates, SMCPs, State Misdemeanor Climate Program, those things. But those are all things that you can throttle on your own as a county versus, you know, being dictated, uh, of the means by your bed capacity. So, it's never gonna get cheaper to build a facility, so you might as well big one, build one that you can foresee can, can actually last thirty, forty, fifty years. And then, in that time you grow into it, you can offset some of those costs by some of these things that we've, we've talked about and what you've discussed.
Thank you very much. I, I do appreciate and agree with everything you just said, but my struggle is the numbers. And if Union County Public Schools can still adequately educate students in eighty and a hundred-year-old, um, buildings with proper, um, maintenance every year, you know, I'm, I'm really struggling with this and, and saying, because I know if Union County Public Schools came to us today and said, we want a new high school, and our capacity right now is eight hundred, but our plan is for two thousand, I know it wouldn't pass, and I know they probably wouldn't get three votes on this panel to even put it on the ballot. So, that's where my struggle is, is if it's not good for one part of our county, how do I justify a tax increase for an eight-hundred-bed jail and three hundred inmates? I, you know, and a tax increase so that it could be a, a profit model?
Well, if you go back to two thousand and three in that area in there, uh, that's when we started implementing all the things in that jail to get the population down. So, you're paying, I don't know how much, but you're paying two salaries of two ADAs that don't do anything but work on the jail project. We send the jail count to the district attorney every day. He keeps up with it. So, all those programs that you see, uh, were put in place to keep the jail population down, and then we have to call other agencies and say, listen, don't bring anybody to jail unless you, if you can let them go on citation, let them go on citation. Now, let me say this about schools. I agree with what you said, but we can't add trailers like the jail, like the school does. Ninety percent of your schools have got trailers. You're building a new Forest Hills High School down there right now that'll house fifty extra students. Wingit's building a thousand homes, Marshall's building seven hundred homes, the north side of the county is booming. That school, when it's built, won't house those. It'll have trailers sitting in the yard.
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but Union County Public Schools actually got rid of a very large inventory, maybe a couple of hundred of MCRs a few years ago, um, after the twenty sixteen bond, but I understand what you're saying. You can't do
I can't, I can't do that.
MCRs where the schools can't, but I, but I want to make an impression on you that we have very, very old schools, so to have a facility that didn't survive thirty or to have a crime lab that we say is gonna be a fifty-year crime lab, I mean, that's kind of shocking when you come from a public school setting. And we have, yeah, I think one of our schools might have been built in nineteen twenty-nine, so, um, but I think at the end of the day, we ha- I just want to say, we have an amazing Union County Sheriff Department. Um, we're very blessed, um, but if we're gonna be asked to do a tax increase, that's a whole nother conversation. That's why I really wanna go through these numbers and a twenty-year-old survey or study, so, and, and if you think that you, because of the discrepancies in twenty twenty-three, the example I've given, do we want to be proactive and different than nineteen ninety-three and ninety-four and do this right?
We do.
Or do we just wanna throw caution to the wind and build an eight-hundred-bed jail and, and have empty beds so that we do have to start contracting with other counties just to justify the ta- tax increase?
It's a six-hundred-bed jail, by the way, but.
It's a six-hundred-bed, eight-hundred core.
And a core of eight-hundred.
Eight, eight-hundred core. But, this is not to take in anything. See, we can't participate in the state misdemeanor. So, we're having to send all our local inmates to somewhere else in the state to house them, because we can't house them. We can't participate in that program. If we could participate in that program, then they could stay here, and the state would pay us forty dollars a day to house them. But, we don't have the room to participate in any of those programs around the state. Uh, so, go ahead.
Well, and the other thing, I could, as far as there being empty bed space, I mean, that average daily population currently is around two thirty-five or so. We, that's all we can pay. That's all we can. We, we have enough, as James, as Lieutenant May mentioned earlier, nuisance offenders. We have enough DWI arrests, we have enough people arrested for other crimes that are frequent customers. They, they cycle through, in and out, in and out, in and out. We can't keep them there. They should be in jail. If we work with Monroe PD, we work with Waxall, these other agencies, we could guarantee within a month, be it three fifty eas- easily. But, we don't have bed space to do that. That's why the proactive posture that we try to continue to operate under is limited. We can't do some of these large-scale operations that we would like to do, but we have to be very calculated in how we do that because of limited capacity. So, it, all we're looking at is a vision and, and having a growth plan for the future. So, we're not asking taxpayers to pay a significant amount more for a jail, for a jail that we're gonna have to build anyway at some point, and it's only gonna get more expensive as time moves on. So, I don't like paying taxes either, but sometimes it's, you know, that's the only way to pay for services, and, uh, it's just a.
Well, Tony, and that's why I was so generous, um, with what you said, the weekenders. The ten that you said are now at Cabarrus County jails. That's why at twenty thirty, using the numbers that you provided, that would put us around two hundred and sixty-five. I felt comfortable going to three hundred and sixty-five in twenty thirty. I just wanna make sure that the numbers are correct and reasonable.
And, uh, we've worked with county management team, and, uh, we've got a tiered bed estimate. Um, there's, there's numbers that spell out every potential option that, that are up for consideration, um, including, you know, a four hundred and fifty-bed facility with a six-hundred-bed core. Having a larger core than how many beds you have initially allows for future expansion. And the goal is, is to make a better, a better life, a better community for our children. And so, hopefully thirty years from now, when our children are in our spots, then they don't have to come up here and, to, you know, ask for another new facility, because we've planned so well today. Um, we're looking, on, on the tiered bed estimate, um, over the next five, ten, fifteen years, you're looking at about a three to five percent estimated increase in construction cost every five years. So, just for instance, the estimated cost in two thousand and thirty for the same size, six-hundred-bed, eight-hundred-core goes up twenty-three million dollars. So, it is, uh, it is, just like the chief said, a vision. Um, we do want it to be a partnership, but we do want to, to make sure we're preparing for the future, not for today. And as, I know we've talked about federal inmates a lot, and just to be as transparent as that as we can be, there's, there's no contract on the table. Nobody has said we're gonna take federal inmates. It's an option, is all it is. It's an option. What we are looking for, most importantly, our top priority, is to safely house, build a structure um, that will house and keep the current needs that we have and allow us to be more proactive. If we have, if we did an operation of a large-scale sex offender compliance operation today, and we check every sex offender in the next two days, more than likely, we would generate probably fifteen to twenty arrests, and we currently would have nowhere to put those people. So, what we're doing is we're using a much smaller team to do that. We're still doing the work. It's just a lot, on a lot smaller of a scale. So, it, uh, I know the numbers are large, um, but we use vision around the sheriff's office a lot. And we like to talk about vision, and, uh, I wanna make sure that when my time comes to retire, that we've done all we can do to, to make this a good, safe community and have the, the infrastructure in place to prepare for our children and, and our community. So, uh, if there's any other questions, we'll be happy to, to take them.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think your ask, uh, is very reasonable, and I think, uh, when we're discussing, um, issues like this, perspective is immensely important. Uh, back in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four, um, the population of Union County was ninety-eight thousand, ninety-eight thousand. Uh, today, it's about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand people. That's an increase of two hundred and sixty-four percent, two hundred and sixty-four percent. Um, so, I think your ask is reasonable. Uh, it's, uh, less than a two hundred and sixty-four percent increase, uh, in the, uh, bed size. Uh, what you're asking in terms of bed size is less than the Cabarrus County detention facility. Cabarrus County is a, a smaller county than Union County. Um, you know, some of the things that have been talked about in terms of, uh, uh, transfers of inmates from Union County to Cabarrus County, Stanley County, other counties, um, that's, that's relatively small potatoes. I think the real story here is how, uh, criminal justice, our law enforcement, our, uh, ADAs, our district attorney, our judges have had to modify their behavior because of a lack of space in the jail. I mean, that should concern all of us greatly. I mean, uh, inmates, you know, uh, uh, felons and, and some misdemeanor offenders, but, you know, felons who should be looking at active sentences, long active sentences, some serious time in, uh, Union County Jail, you know, are not getting those active sentences, uh, because of a lack of space. You know, we're unable to engage in these kind of proactive programs that you've talked about, um, because of a lack of space in this, uh, facility, the current facility. You know, and, uh, the other thing I'll mention in terms of, uh, federal inmates, you know, Bill, we're not building a new jail because, you know, we wanna rake in the federal dollars. I mean, we are responsibly looking at how this county has grown, how it might grow, uh, and will grow more in the future to, as a county that's, that's in the backyard of Charlotte. Um, it's that, in the early life of a new jail, there're gonna be opportunities to get some federal dollars and help meet the debt service obligations of a new jail, which will not be insubstantial. So, it's, it's not that, uh, you know, we're looking to fill up this new jail with federal inmates, and that's why we're building it. It's that, early in the life of this new facility, we'll have an opportunity, you know, to give the taxpayer some relief and help meet these debt service obligations. Um, and, and the other thing I'll mention too is it's, it's not just, you know, white-collar criminals or, you know, uh, other federal offenders that the, uh, federal government may want some local help with. You know, let's talk about the, uh, two eighty-seven G program, you know, the immigration holds. If we happen to get a federal executive that, you know, uh, gets serious about, uh, you know, violations of immigration law, you know, we could be helpful there, uh, in a new jail, whereas today, we couldn't be helpful at all, even if we had, uh, a chief executive that was serious about it. So, I think the, the, the case for a new jail is strong. I think the case specifically for your ask is a strong one. Um, you know, studies, you know, you know, studies are all well and good, uh, but sometimes they're an excuse for delayed action. You know, and, and how much are we really gonna learn if we commission a new study that we, uh, don't already know, that we can't already learn, uh, from our peers, from counties like Johnson County, Cabarrus County, uh, New Hanover County, counties that are similar in size, uh, and are in the backyards of, uh, a, a major metropolis. I mean, um, uh, you know, I, I don't want us to be in a, in a spot where we were, uh, back in ninety-three and ninety-four, where a judge ordered us to build this thing. And no doubt, some of the problems in the current facility are because, um, you know, we had to comply with an order, rapid, quick, and get this thing designed and built. So, let's not make that mistake again, and let's, um, act with consideration, yes, deliberation and diligence, yes. But, uh, at least to this commissioner, I think a new jail and a jail, uh, of the size that you have come here and asked of us is imminently reasonable. Thank you.
County Manager Matthews.
Yeah, all I wanted to, uh, point out is, uh, Chris Boyd with our facilities office does have some, um, options. Another board asked to see some other possible options, so he does have some additional information, so you can see cost estimates for different size, uh, facilities. So, I, I didn't want you to think that it, it would end with, uh, the sheriff's office. We do have a little di- a different, additional information, that's all.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll make this brief. I know that we've, we've had a lot of discussion on this. Um, this question is more towards staff, so you guys are off the hook for a time. Um, my question is, is one of the things we talked about during our legislative breakfast was, uh, the potential for funding from the state. Has there been any opportunities to discuss that with any of our state folks? Um, has there been any sort of update about, um, potential, um, state funds that could be utilized for a project like this?
Well, I, I, we have continued to, um, communicate that need to the, to the state. We haven't received any feedback that, uh, funding is coming, um, but we will continue to express our need, but to this point, no, no commitment has been made.
So, as far as we know, we're on our own, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's the way we have the plan, is on our own, and that means funded by the Union County taxpayer?
Yes.
Okay, so.
As far as the legislature goes, we're too early in the plan. Uh, we don't have any architect, we don't have any plan, and it's too early to request the state to fund anything, but that's still available.
Yeah, and, and I would look for us to try to, you know, seek out every single opportunity that we could,
I promise.
you know, lessen that impact. Um, and, you, you know, I wanna make this clear that there's one thing to be concerned about, the project cost, okay? And I think that that's what you're seeing out of this, uh, the, the board here tonight, is there is significant concern when you start looking at a hundred and fifty million dollars, almost a hundred and fifty-one million dollars. And, and again, I wanna go back to reiterate this, it's not just capital cost, it's operating cost too. You're talking about a bigger light bill. Now, you're talking about more sewer. Have we even looked to determine how much a six-hundred-bed facility like this, eight-hundred-core, would require as far as sewer capacity? I mean, that's, that's something that's of tremendous concern right now, and sewer is a very precious resource in this county. Um, so do we have any estimation on the numbers about, you know, could we even have the existing capacity for that? And how much, um, you know, that would impact our current system?
So, that's actually the, um, Eastside system, uh, which is a contract with Monroe, so we do have capacity. We could serve that under our current contract. And also, we are in potential discussions with the city about their possible expansion of their plant. I know decisions have been made, but that obviously is a, a component we could discuss with them as well.
So, would that not force a partnership on sewer with Monroe if we were to delve down this path, and would there be extra cost involved?
It, it would not force a partnership. We already have capacity that we could accommodate it. It certainly wouldn't hurt if we wanted additional capacity.
And do we pay more for that, or, I mean, if we're looking at it versus using our own utility, if we're, if we're using Monroe's sewer utility for that, that's an extra cost?
Yeah, every gallon that we use, we have to pay for, absolutely.
So, so again, what I'm saying is, and I'm not trying to nickel and dime you, but when you're talking about a hundred and fifty million dollars, it's not just a hundred and fifty million dollars. And then my next question is, is that, you know, listen, we support you guys, all right? We, we, we really do, all right? But we also have to look at the impact for the entire community on this. And I know that the argument can be made about public safety. That's something that's so important to this board. You know, but the other part of that is, is we have to balance. You know, we have to balance tax rates too. And so, we're looking at a hundred and fifty million dollars. During our board retreat, uh, what, a month and a half ago, something like that, you know, we discussed the possibility, and we looked at some models as far as the rates are concerned with a hundred and fifty million dollars. Now, that was including, you know, two other projects with that a hundred and fifty million dollars, um, not just the jail. not just the jail. But with $150 million-ish, you're looking at about two and a half pennies. That's two and a half pennies on the tax rate. That's not including any new schools. That's not including SPCC's ask from tonight, all right? So we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of things to think about, and we've got a lot of things to work out. And so I think that there might be some validity, you know, to the need for a new jail. I think that the question becomes, you know, how can we make this more affordable so that we can be responsible to the people that we represent? Thank you.
I don't have anything. You know, we made the recommendation, this is y'all's decision on the size of that jail. We know we got to, but we do want you to plan for the future and not just build it and hope we can get by. Because it's obvious we've got to have a new jail. And we can't, unless you just want to keep paying six or seven million dollars a year to patch it up, and that's what we're doing. And the county's facilities, they're doing it. They're digging the ditches and putting in the plumbing and doing all the things there. I don't have an answer for you on the money. That's not my... I'm just, no, I don't do bunny. But it's up to y'all to do it, but you need to think about, if you do it small, are you going to have to come back? I won't have to come back, but if you're going to come back in 10 years and have to add on again, and it's going to cost you as much as you started the first time. So you've got big decisions to make.
Once again, thank you all for your time tonight. I hope that the information, like Sheriff said, you've got a lot of big decisions to make, but I hope that our information contained in the presentation has helped kind of make the whole process a little bit more transparent. So we're always open to questions. I ask you to reach out at any point if any of the information we've presented tonight, you don't have, you'd like more clarification on, please let us know.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. As Brian mentioned, we've got, or I've got some, I guess, some different estimates on different scenarios for size of jail. And that was precipitated from our retreat that we had, that you asked some questions about, can we see some different costs for some different sized facilities? So I've got one slide, so it's pretty quick. So hopefully, it won't take too long. I do want to clarify one thing, or a couple of things with, I think, Mr. Hems, you asked about the estimates. It does include demolition. The estimates that you'll see include demolition of the old jail, and it does include also the land as part of the total project cost. So when you see $151 million, it includes the land that you've already paid for, and it also includes demolition. All right. So I've got three scenarios I'm going to share. I also wanted to share, too, to give you some sense of impact of escalation for each of these projects. The first one is a 400-bed and a 600-bed core size. I think y'all understand the, you know, the difference between bed count and core size. If that was funded in 2025, that will cost almost $109 million. If it's funded in year 2030, that jumps to $124.5. So you can see the impact escalation on projects of this scope and magnitude, you know, compounding, you know, all the annual increases, it's that significant. The next scenario is a 500-bed, 600-bed core, funded in 2025, that's $121,781,000. If funded in year 2030, that's right at $140 million. The last scenario is a 600-bed, 600-bed core, which you've seen before, you've seen this number before, and that's $135 million. If you waited till 2030, that price goes up to $155 million. So that's the three scenarios that I had. I know that's, you know, kind of quick and painless, but if you've got any questions that you want to ask me about, you know, how those estimates are developed, where they came from, I'm here to answer those now, if you want.
Maybe it's obvious, and I'm not picking up on it right away, but is the number different for a 600-bed camp with an 800-core?
Yes. Yeah, that's the $151 million number that the sheriff's office shared within their presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, so this is for information tonight. However, be aware that if the board's intention are to put this on a general obligation bond, we really have to have a decision by your April 15 meeting on that you are going to put it on a GO bond, and what's the number that we're going to put on the GO bond. You have to select whatever that is, $124 million, $150 million, whatever the number is. Not just trying to put you in a box, but we have that timeline we have to meet. If the board decides that you wish to have additional information, which you certainly can, what that will likely do is delay this to a bond referendum in 2026. You can only do general obligation bonds on even years, so you'd have to wait till 2026. That will change these prices, because obviously escalation is going to go into effect, timing, costs. So just keep those things in mind. If the board wants additional time, we're really going to have to push for this for a later general obligation bond. You're not going to be able to meet that timeline.
Mr. Chairman, on that note, Mr. County Manager, I mean, this is good. All right, we need to see these figures. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see a situational type, I'd like to see what the bond would look like. What I would like to see is, if we financed $108 million, or, I'm sorry, $108 million for a 400-bed facility, you know, what would that look like as far as our rate increase modeling? What would the taxpayer see when they went to ballot?
Sure. On the 15th, we will have some of the scenarios for you, so you can see those.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Boyd?
What's that?
Did you have something else you wanted?
No, I didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
I think at this time, we'll take about a 10-minute break.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The business agenda is item number 24, 184, FY23 Short Water Line Extension Program, applicant fee payment results and recommended project list approval.
Evening commissioners, thank you for your time. Not an April Fool's joke, I'm not Alina Young who normally speaks to you all about the shoreline program. She's at home, her and her husband are expecting their first child literally any day now, so we didn't want to ask her to hang her out until late in the evening to give this presentation. So if it goes great, credit goes to her, if it goes poorly then credit goes to me. But did want to acknowledge the hard work that she has done in making the program successful, as well as Kim Rollins and Tui Lei who are in our engineering group that support her with running the program. Before I dive into, a quick discussion on where we're at with the applicants that paid the participation fees to move forward with the FY23 program. Just want to give a very quick background on the program. So the shoreline program has been around in some form or fashion since the early 2000s. There's been various iterations of it. The current iteration for FY23 is the second year of a ranking system that we have utilized to score applicants based on primarily two factors, health hazards with multiple components of that, and then utility economic factors. Obviously, we've got to make sure we're being responsible with the money that we're using to help folks, so we want to do the most good as efficiently as possible. So as part of that program, we have a 90-day application period that's posted for the public to submit applications for the program, include their well testing results. Once we get those results, or excuse me, once we get their applications, we score them based on the scoring system and we rank them accordingly with the project with the highest point value being priority number one. Then we work through the cost of each of the projects to see, can we fund them all? Or where do we have to draw that line based on the available funding we have for that particular year? Once we do that, we bring it to the board for approval of the selected projects, which has been done, and at that time we notify the selected applicants of a 90-day period for them to pay their fees. Their fees consist of a cost share fee and then a meter fee. So that's what they have to pay upfront to lock in their participation in the program, and that's kind of where we're at now at this point. Those fees have been paid and we're looking to the board for direction on approval of those projects going forward in their modified version so that we can start the engineering and design process. So just quick background there, since we've got some new faces on the board. So, real quick, here's kind of a summary of where we started with the recommended projects and where we find ourselves at now. The column there in the middle were the original numbers that we previously presented to the board and was approved, and then the column on the right-hand side in the green font is where we find ourselves now that the payment period has ended. So, we ended up with 15 of the 17 projects had at least one applicant pay to confirm their participation. We ended up with about a little over 75% of the original selected applicants paying their fees. That resulted in about a 25% reduction in the overall total length of the projects. Since we had the same number of reduction roughly in applicants as we did footage, that's why you see no difference in the average cost per applicant. We did see a slight reduction, about a 10% reduction in the average potential customers per mile. What that is, is that's not just factoring in the current applicants, but that are all, those are all parcels along a particular project that could potentially connect to the water line once it's installed. So again, that's looking at the utility economic feasibility of the project. And then with that reduction in total project length, we ended up with about $900,000 less in estimated expense for this year's program. So, any questions on that before I move to the next slide with a little more detail on the nuts and bolts of this? All right, so here, I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but here's a breakdown of each of the original 17 projects that were recommended, that were approved by the board. Again, the column in green shows the applicants that paid, the column in red shows how many applicants for a particular project did not pay. Most of the projects had 100% participation, or if they had multiple applicants, there may have been one applicant that decided not to participate. We did have two projects that were single applicant projects that the applicant did not pay, so that's why you see a zero percentage there. That's why we have 15 recommended projects going forward instead of 17. The couple of projects that show a 25% participation rate, fortunately, those applicants were, of those groups were the closest to our existing water line, so what that resulted in is a similar reduction in the length of the project. So it's not, we're running the full length of the project and only going to get a quarter of the applicants. So we did see a comparable reduction in the overall length. As I mentioned, payment of the fees were due by November 20th this past year to lock in participation in the program, and again, two of the projects did not have any applicants pay their fees. And the last thing I'd like to note is, of the selected projects, other than the two that only had one applicant that did not pay, when we re-scored those projects, they still would have been selected and recommended for board approval even with the reduced number of applicants. Here's a few more details, I won't run through the numbers, but again, just a breakdown where the numbers in black are the original information that was approved by the board, and in green is the updated information based on payment of the fees. So again, we're looking at about, not quite five miles of pipeline with the updated numbers and just a shade under $2.5 million. The last two columns deal with water age. One thing that we did have to look at as part of the program is we want to make sure we're not getting water contamination issues with the water line by basically not having enough demand to turn over the water in the pipeline so that it becomes stagnant. That would not be a good thing. Typically, the cutoff for that, based on a AWWA standard, which is not a regulation, but it's an accepted practice throughout the industry, is 14 days. So, as you can see there, there's a few that are approaching that, but they're still under, so they're in compliance with the recommended water age. All right, moving on, here's a map of all 17 projects. You'll see the two with red dots were the two projects that had zero applicants pay, so that was project number 40 and project number 44. All of the green dots show the 15 locations where we had applicants that paid to confirm their participation in the project. A few other of the miscellaneous red lines that you see were projects that were, they applied, but due to water age concerns or other factors, were not part of the selected One other thing that we did look at as part of our evaluation is what projects were going to need easements. We have several locations that they are either in privately owned roads, or maybe DOT only has a, what we call a maintenance right-of-way, where they do not have a dedicated right-of-way, but they do maintain, say, from ditch to ditch. So we did want to see kind of where projects would be impacted by easements. I know the board stated back in November when we came to you for condemnation approval for a couple of other prior short-line projects, the preference not to utilize eminent domain on future projects. So we did look at that. Three of the 15 projects do require easements. The three projects are shown in the maps on the right-hand side of the screen. The parcels in blue show the applicants for those projects, and then the parcels in red are non-applicant parcels that we estimate we would need easements from. For the applicants that we would need easements, they are required to grant that easement as part of their application process. Those who are non-applicants, we follow the county's standard easement acquisition policy. So we do an appraisal to establish a fair market value and then offer compensation in accordance with the appraised value. Any questions on that before I move on? All right, so, basically, we're looking for action from the board tonight on direction on moving forward with the 15 projects that have confirmed applicants who have paid their fees as part of the program, and with that I'll welcome any questions.
Mr. Chairman. If you can go back a few slides, what I want to look at is, I want to look at the number of the applicants versus, this might be, hang on. So, maybe it was the other one where they had, where it had the values in red. There we go, okay. So what I was looking at is, we've got some of these projects where you have, say, four applicants, but only one person paid. Can you go back over that? It's already been a long...
Yeah, no, 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 fair enough. So, what we found in those instances is the applicant that was closest to our existing water line is who paid their fee. So basically, what we will do is, the project will stop at their property. So let's say we had a project that was originally a mile long, they live in the first quarter mile, the other three applicants that lived along the remaining stretch, we would stop the project at the first applicant that actually paid, and so that's where you see the reduction in the total length of the project and the total cost of the project.
Perfect, thank you very much, I appreciate that, because, you know, I want to be clear, I believe that, you know, we should be trying, personally, I believe that we should be trying to get water to those folks that won't water.
Absolutely.
But there's also, you know, some expectation on their part as well. I mean, the cost of this is pretty significant per applicant, and it's a big investment for the county. And so, I agree with the 15 projects, because what we're doing here, if I understand correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is we are eliminating those couple of projects, so 040 and then 044, where you had an applicant but nobody paid.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
But if I'm understanding this correctly, five of those 15 that we're considering still have unpaid applicants. Right? I mean...
No, I'm not reading that wrong, nevermind. No, I mean, we do, so we do have projects, say they had 10 applicants as part of that project, maybe only nine of them paid. So depending on where that 10th one was, either the project shortens, or maybe they fall in the middle of that project, we would still run the project to that last applicant. Basically, it means that, you know, it becomes a little more expensive per applicant because we have the same footage, but we have one less applicant. So yet, you are correct that folks, there are folks in multiple projects that, for whatever reason, chose not to pay the fees that were outlined to them upfront, you know, don't understand the circumstances why they chose not to participate ultimately after they were selected.
And some of those, depending on where they are along that street, would essentially be free riders.
If they, if they later decided they wanted water and wanted to connect to the system, then they would pay whatever applicable fees were at that time, so they'd have to pay our tab fee...
And it's still going right by them?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that would apply for any other property along that project that wasn't part of the application process. Once the water line's there, it's accessible to them, they request service, and they pay whatever applicable fees are at that time to connect to the system.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Question for staff. So at this point, you know, what are you looking from the board? Do you need a formal vote then to proceed with these 15 projects and, I guess, potentially negotiate the easements for...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's, I'll make that motion. So I'll make the motion that we proceed with the 15 recommended projects as presented to the board and authorize our staff to negotiate the potential easements for those projects. And I would also like to add to that motion one other thing, and that would be to direct staff to bring us back an update, I would say maybe in the next couple of months or so, an update on the short-line water extension program, its history, and what this program has accomplished to date. So there would be three things in this motion, just to clarify for my colleagues. Number one, that we proceed with 15 recommended projects as presented. Number two, that we direct staff to negotiate the necessary easements for these projects to continue, and then number three, to direct staff to bring an update on the short-line water program, its history and what the program has accomplished to this point since its inception at a later, at a later time.
Any discussion on the vice chairman's motion? All in favor of the motion indicated by, all opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
The next item of business is item 24058, Union County Water CIP Workshop Follow-Up. I'll recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, I realize that I stand between you and your comfortable beds, so I will do my best not to stand up here too long, but this is a heavy lift, there's a lot of information. Please don't hesitate to stop and ask questions along the way. All right, right there. Oh, what's that? Also, want to make you aware that our consultants for Stantec, which is the company that helps us with our rate model, are on the call, they've been very patient, I appreciate that. They're there in case that you have any questions about the rate side of it, because we are going to give you some information related to rates here. So, just want to talk about a few things here. To start, we had, you know, this building on the workshop that we bid back in December with you, went over a lot of information back in December, and actually, prior to that, back in 2023, we talked to you about the Brown and Caldwell Master Plan, and all this is built around that master plan. It's going to show you some different scenarios, we're going to talk about those ultimate rate impacts. So again, we're talking about that. We're trying to answer any questions you might have as far as those rate impacts. As far as those master plan projects go, remember, if you recall, there were several things we were trying to deal with. Pressure, so water pressure issues, fire flow, and then conveyance capacity. Conveyance is really more of your sewer side, if you have enough capacity in the pipes to send the sewer to the plant where it can be treated. So those were, those were ideas that were part of the master plan, and then capacity, what were our capacity needs for additional water, for additional sewer. And also want to point out that the estimates that are in here are very high level. Understand, this is based on a 15-year capital improvement plan. So a lot of the information we give you is really very high level, and things change a lot in 15 years. So, again, we're doing our best to give you a number, but that doesn't mean that number will be accurate in two years, or 10 years, or 15 years, it's the best guess we have at this point in time. So, and you do have a copy of this presentation, you have this information to refer back to. I believe there's some additional information attached that I'm not going to talk about, but please, by all means, refer to that if you have questions in the future. I am going to clarify that this is just for information only tonight. We will need board direction, and this is where the 15th is going to be a heavy lift. We're going to need some direction from you by our meeting on the 15th, because we have to build this all into our budget, and we have to have that prepared so that we can then bring that back to you for you to consider. So it's a lot of information, don't have to decide tonight, but two weeks, we're going to need a lot. What this does is, this shows you the original estimate that the, that we had from the consultant, and you can see down at the bottom, if you looked at every one of these projects, and I'm not saying you're going to do every one of these projects, I'm just telling you, the totality of this was over $652 million. That was an estimate done when this plan was originally put together back in 2023. The staff went through and sort of looked at it and said, okay, we really need to, number one, update those numbers, and we also need to add some things that were not contemplated in that. And what I mean by that is, what was not contemplated in the original master plan was running and maintaining the current Crooked Creek plant. We're going to be running that plant for a long time, at least another 15 years, maybe even longer than that. And so there is some money programmed in here for us to do that. We don't know that exact number, we programmed 30 million. It might be 20, it might be 60, we don't really know what the number is, but we had to program something because you are going to have to maintain, we're going to have to do some work in that plant. So that's programmed in here. What also wasn't originally contemplated is, we've had that discussion with you about space needs, and how do we accommodate space needs, judicial center, and what do we do for the judicial center? And the only way to really accommodate the judicial center at this point in time is, we have to relocate some of our public works staff out of this building in order to accommodate judicial center. To do that, you have to have funding in your model to cover an expansion... center. To do that, you have to have funding in your model to cover an expansion of the operations center. That's built into this as well. So you can see that number, and you see where that comes from. And so if you look at that, you get that final CIP number there, that's over $1.3 billion. Now, I, I want to point out, that is based on a 15-year timeframe. Some of these projects would have, if the board said yes, some of these projects would happen in a couple of years. Some of these projects would happen 15 years from now. So that number is if you had did the entire CIP over that entire 15-year time period, a little over $1.3 billion. It is broken down, so some of them are sewer projects, and I mean conveyance sewer projects. Some of them are water projects, meaning there are water lines, tanks. Some of them are capacity projects. But they're all in this, in this update, so you can see the totality of it. Now, what we did is we took that information, we said, okay, well, based on this, what would this do as far as a rate impact? If the board said, we want to do some things, we want to do it all, what does that look like? All right. So this is really just a, a breakdown of those information. In that total 15-year capacity for water, if you did everything, that's $303 million. If you did treatment, because there is a need for some new treatment for water in, in the future, that's $114 million. And transmission, conveyance, water tanks, that's $188 million in that 15-year timeframe. Wastewater by itself, if you did everything for wastewater, it's almost, almost a billion dollars, almost $900 million. Treatment by itself, $742 million. And conveyance or transmission, $156 million. Weave into that, the regular maintenance and things that you have to do over time is estimated at $128 million. And then facility needs, that's that operation center. If you decided that we need that operation center, we need that space, that's an additional $15 million. And that's where you get the $1.346 million. So that breaks that down, so you can see water versus wastewater versus capacity versus just treatment. So we do a rate model. We have to build a lot of things into that rate model. You know, hydraulics, system deficiencies, what are the capital projects we need to do? All that goes into actually building your ultimate financing and how you pay for things. Because our system is really built on cash and debt. There's no way that we're going to be able to do all of these projects without some debt. Now, you can do none of the projects, and we probably are okay. We might do a little bit of debt, because remember, you did do a rate increase of 1.75%. And there is a little bit of debt in that. But if you do any of these other projects, there's not enough cash to do it all. You have to build some debt into that. So I, I wanted to kind of talk about how the rate model works and just give you an example here. So if you look at the screen, you'll see here at the top, you'll see 2024, and it goes through 2023. And again, as I said, the board previously approved three years of 1.75% rate increases. It does show potential rate increases in out years. The board hasn't made those decisions. It just shows you that, so you can see that. And, and what you, what's really important is when you look into this rate covenant and these additional bonds tests, we need to see that those are not getting into the red. Because they're getting into the red, we actually don't meet our requirements. Therefore, we can't issue debt. We are violating our covenants. And the way it is currently, if we're doing projects that we, that the board previously approved, not adding really anything else, if we keep the rates at 1.75%, we meet our bond test, we're fine. But we're not adding any other projects. It is what it is today, and that's all it is. But that's just showing you, we're okay. It's when we start adding things that it changes. So changes that have happened since you approved your rate, we got some additional funding from the state. That helped. So we got a little over $25 million from the state for the 12-Mile Creek plant. The reason though that's less is because the state actually holds back some administrative money out of that. So that's why it's 25.2 and not the total amount that you might have seen. They get to hold some of that money back and keep that. We got some money for the Waxall Graywater System. That was helpful as well. And, and then there are other items that need to be built into the rate model as well. Any salary increases, because again, Union County Water is also part of the county, so any changes that we do to compensation and, and benefits, they get to be part of that as well. So we have to build that into there. There are also some additional, excuse me, personnel needs. There are some staffing needs we're going to have to address as part of this. And then there's some additional operating costs. And when I say that, that means chemicals, electricity, things that we are going to have to have in order to continue to operate this facilities that we have. And those are shown down at the bottom. So you've got an idea that those are amounts that need to be built into your model. So we've got some additional revenue that helps offset some of our, our, our costs, but we do have some other costs that we also have to factor into that. So I'm going to skip and get to this one. So if you were to look at doing what we call our water master plan projects and our sewer master plan projects, that's not treatment and capacity. That's not expanding the water plant. That's not expanding a sewer plant. That's only doing the additional water tanks, new water lines in order to address flow and, uh, fire flow and pressure issues. That's sewer lines where we have a restricted amount of flow, and we need additional flow. That's upsizing those sewer lines. That's all that means. If you were to do just those two things, not anything to do with capacity, as you can see here, 1.75% doesn't work. It's in the red as soon as you, as you look in those out years. You cannot accommodate all of that additional work without having some rate changes. That's just to give you an idea. It's not possible with the current rate structure that we have. So what would it take if you wanted to actually have that in place? Well, and we broke this into water and sewer. I heard very clearly when we talked before that the board wanted to see what would be a water rate, and now all the projects related to water. What would be a sewer rate and all the projects related to sewer? So if you were to do those water projects, all the water tanks, water lines, you'd have to have an additional 4.25% of rates for four years. After that, you could go to about 1.75%. But those first four years, from 25 through 28, you'd have to have an increase in your rates for water of 4.25% each and every year to accommodate all of those water projects related to lines and tanks and some pumps for those water. If you were to do those sewer projects, meaning the ones that were, you were having to add additional capacity in the lines, not in plants, but you need additional sewer lines, those projects would have an additional 5.5% for four years over that same timeframe. As you can see, the cost goes up in order to meet your, your bond tests and your requirements. I want to go to this one. I want to talk about like how you can look at your own leisure and kind of see how this all fits together. There's multiple scenarios here. We have an A through F. And each one of these boxes represents something that you have to do. And so the first three are things that were already approved. They're really already built into that original 1.75% rate increase. That gray is if you did work with the operations center. The two blue items are those water projects or sewer projects, water meaning, again, only water lines, only tanks, and then the sewers, only sewer line expansions. And then those green items are items that have to do with capacity expansion. I'm building a new sewer plant. I'm building, I'm expanding my water plant. That's what those items are. And you can see in each one of those scenarios, there's things that we leave in, and there's things that we take out. So you can see what those, what those differences are. I apologize. I've been dealing with a cough for a little while here. So ultimately, and I'll get to it, but you see F down here at the bottom, that has everything. That has every single project, every single expansion, the whole kit and caboodle. That's going to be the most expensive, obviously. A is going to be your less expensive, because it doesn't have as many items that you have to, have to deal with. All of them also include the Crooked Creek work that you'll have to do. That's 30 million we program. Every one has that in there, because you have to do it. We have to maintain that facility. This is really basically showing you the rate model so that you can see it over time, and you can see every one of the scenarios. And as I explained before, you can see where those, those increases are going up significantly. And I'm, I apologize. I actually used a reference before. That was actually a, a reference and not, and not the actual number. So for where you get into where you're having water expansion and sewer expansion, I'm sorry, no water expansion, that's D. That's where you're actually adding capacity to the plant. I want the board to keep in mind that you've approved a 12-Mile Creek expansion. All right. So what that does is that means there'll be additional sewer capacity in that 12-Mile Creek basin. That's going to allow for additional growth. Additional growth will use additional water. There's already pressure on the water system in the Catawba. That is served by the Catawba. We have a partnership with Lancaster. They're growing as fast, if not faster than we are. So there's going to come a point within the next few years that either we're going to drive the need for an expansion to that plant, or they're going to drive the need for the expansion of that plant. And we're all going to have to work together on that expansion. And so what that particular rate model, D, shows is that if you were to decide we're going to do that expansion, you're going to have a significantly higher rate increase to accommodate that expansion for that water plant. Whatever that size is, we're going to get half of that expansion. Lancaster Water and Sewer is going to get half of that expansion. And so you're seeing that that's a 7.25% increase over those four years for you to do all the water projects and an expansion to the Catawba plant. Any questions so far about how that works?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair.
So once again, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, Brian. When you say all the projects, we're talking about the whole kit and caboodle, everything?
Water.
Correct.
Water.
So all of the water projects are rolled up into this 7.25 increase?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Consequently, if you want to see all the sewer projects rolled up, look down at F. You see where it says sewer? 11.75% rate increase forever? Not forever, but it's for the entire 15-year timeframe, obviously. That's to accommodate every single sewer project. That's capacity. That's building a new wastewater treatment plant. That's expanding 12-Mile Creek, again, from nine to 12. Because ultimately, you are going to put pressure on that system to have an expansion for 12-mile if the board sees fit. So that's everything. That's both of those expansions. That's all the sewer projects. That's an 11.75% increase for the entire 15-year timeframe. And then you see on top of that, the water changes, that 7.25% for every one of the water projects, showing you the full, full total cost that this organization would have to put in place for rates.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir.
And this may be a stupid question, because I don't understand. Why is it done over a four-year period instead of spreading it out over a longer period of time as far as the rate increases?
So you can slice this any way you like. You can obviously try to spread those costs longer. But ultimately, what they deal with is we have to actually generate enough revenue to meet our bond tests and be able to pay that debt service off. So what we've tried to do is get the lowest rate to make sure we meet all those bond covenants and those bond tests. So that's why it's 4.25%. If you tried to lower it less than that, you'd likely see in those early years, we wouldn't meet our bond tests. So you, you, you could try it, but it's, you're, we've tried to get it as close as we can to make sure we meet those bond tests.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And Andy, please speak up if I've said something wrong, because I know Andy Burnham is on there if I've said anything incorrectly.
You're doing great, Brian. You're letting me just say, clarify that. We are showing the next big borrowing for the capital plan in 2028. So that additional bonds test is really why we're kind of having to compress those increases during that four-year period through 2028.
All right. So I wanted to go back and get to where we are with the sewer expansion. So C, it's these wastewater projects only. Sorry, I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. All right. So if you look at, and I'm going to look at C here, that is what it would take. That's a 6%. If you do sewer capacity, you do only sewer lines, sewer pump stations, no added treatment capacity, four years, you're looking at a 6% rate increase for four years to do those sewer projects. So one of those was to upsize the East Fork Interceptor Line. That's the one that comes from Poplin, actually connects, flows ultimately to 12-Mile Creek. That current line is undersized. We're not going to be able to continue to allow flow to go through there for much longer, because it's going to reach what we call a surcharge position. And so what that means is sewers start coming out of the ground. So at some point in the near future, we're going to have to literally stop issuing permits to connect to that, because that line is not sized enough. That's built into that 6%. If you were to say, I'm okay with that, we, that's one of the projects that would be part of that. There are other sewer line projects that are part of that 6%, but that's the easiest one for me to describe to you, is that East Fork project, which is undersized.
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, thank you, Brian. So I, I want to be clear. When you say pump stations, what we're talking about is we're talking about basically like R and R. We're talking about like net zero stuff here. We're not talking about adding in new pump stations. This is essentially maintaining what we currently have.
That's, that's true. You may be expanding an existing pump station in order to accommodate the fact that you've upsized that line. You may very well have to do that, but it's not about adding new pump stations, not about necessarily creating development potential for some other new piece of property. It's really accommodating all that flow that we're trying to get through those restricted pipes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. This is just, breaks you down, just shows a summary of the same thing that I was telling you. And, and so ultimately, you, you've got a lot of options here. And we're not asking you to take any, make any decisions here. It starts at, hey, I do nothing. I don't do a thing. But I want to point out, if we don't do anything, with our, our consultants has already shown us that in 2030 and 2035, we will have significant issues with our water system. Never mind the sewer side of it. We will have fire flow and pressure issues that we will have to deal with by 2030, in some places, and 2035 in other places. So I, I don't know that doing nothing is the decision. Board can make that decision, but understand, we're just kicking the can down the road. For water in particular, you have already identified fire flow and water pressure issues. Now, how far do you go with that? Do you add in capacity? Do you add in sewer? Do you add those other things to think about? That's when the rate starts changing, depending on what you decide. What we're showing you here is for water. starts changing, depending on what you decide. What we're showing you here is for water, the minimum rate increase that we would recommend the board consider, if you want to address those fire flows, those water pressure issues, those specific system issues, that's a 4.25% rate increase over the next four years. If you said, we really don't want to do anything for sewer, we're going to leave it the way it is, there is an increase. And really, that's because we have to address that Crooked Creek. It's 2.25, 2.5%. Because we have to have money to address Crooked Creek. That's built into that. And so that's why you see a 2.5% rate increase for sewer. Because that number wasn't baked into that 1.75% rate increase years ago when we did that. We didn't have that number in there. So that's where that's coming from. But that's not adding any, that's not adding any sewer projects. That's not expanding that East Fork line. That's not doing anything for your sewer system. If you actually want to do something for your sewer system, then that's when you get into that 6% time. There's no capacity. You're not expanding your 12 Mile Creek plant. You're not, you're not building Site B. You're not doing any of that work. You're literally just making it so your flows can get to the plant that exists now. It's a 6% rate increase over the four-year timeframe before it drops back down. And then ultimately, you have a very high rate increase if you do every single thing.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Brian. So if I'm looking, if I'm looking at the modeling correctly, Scenario C, I believe?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, it's been a long evening.
That's alright.
But Scenario C represents the water projects and then...
The sewer projects and only the Crooked Creek R and R, which is a 30 million.
So that's only Crooked Creek. That does not take into consideration the East Fork?
That is, no, East Fork is in that. So if you look there where it's in the green, it says sewer master plan. See that? Like next to that, sewer master plan is that East Fork line. Those are those lines. You'll see that that's X means those projects would be included in that.
Okay.
What's not included is 12 Mile. You don't, there's no X there. Site B, no X. No capacity additions would be included in that.
And those two, the East Fork and obviously Crooked Creek, I think it's important, what you just said, so you're not adding capacity there.
Correct.
You are simply improving flows and maintaining our facilities.
Yes. And so what you also are doing, and keep in mind, is that we currently flow sewer from our Poplin Basin to 12 Mile Creek. That's where it's treated. So you pump that sewer across the ridge into the 12 Mile Creek basin. We've added what's called an equalization tank in that Poplin area to allow for some additional flow. It's not, it's not capacity, but it allows you to regulate when that capacity goes through the system. Essentially, if we don't do something with that East Fork, we're limiting what can be done in that Poplin area for the future. You won't be able to take advantage, full advantage of the EQ tank and all of the opportunity to serve that area because you can't push it through those pipes to get it down there to treat it. You might have treatment capacity. You can't get it to the treatment capacity because the pipes are undersized. Does that make sense?
Sort of. So it's kind of like addition by subtraction here. So basically, what you're saying is, is that we may have some capacity there that can be found if we do this because we're increasing our efficiencies by larger pipe.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So yeah, it's not, we're not creating new capacity. We're allowing capacity to be utilized in an area where it couldn't be otherwise.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The same holds true for the 12 Mile Creek basin. I don't want everyone to misunderstand. And I don't, I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you an example of that. I think I've got that here. I think a visual is always helpful. Sorry, I'm going to find something I can show you. Where is that? Is that East Fork? Oh, that's Molly Branch. Alright, so, no, that's Hunley. I'm sorry. I thought that was... My apologies. This is another presentation. I was trying to make sure I found it, but I am not finding it. Alright. Well, I don't have it. I thought I had it in here. What, this one is it? This one's it? Oh, East Fork. That's right. So, thank you very much. So there's a lot that goes into this East Fork line. And so it's not just all the stuff that comes from Poplin. There is area to be served that is still in this 12 Mile Creek basin. So this is the East Fork line as we're talking to, as it gets down to the plant. So while Poplin is way over here, this line is still undersized in this area right here. So if you try to flow more flow here, it's obviously restricted, but you obviously cannot flow more flow in these areas because the line is still restricted. So not only are you assisting that you can allow additional flow from Poplin, you can serve additional flow in the 12 Mile Creek because you're upsizing that line to accommodate that. And that's what I was trying to make sure you understood. It serves two purposes. It doesn't just help Poplin. It also helps the 12 Mile Creek basin as well. It allows for additional flow to be accommodated in 12 Mile Creek basin. And I'm sorry it took me so long to get to that. But that's ultimately what I was trying to show you is that it serves more than one purpose.
Mr. Chair, I have a question really quick. When we're looking at these percent increases and you have it broken down, you know, one increase for water and one increase for sewer. And I may have jumped ahead and looked at the average monthly residential usage or whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
But I just want to clarify from staff and from you. If you're a water customer, then you're only seeing that increase. If you are a sewer customer, you're only seeing that increase. If you're water and sewer, you have to add both. There's no...
That's correct.
Changes like there were in...
Yeah, in the past, what you're bringing up is that that rate was smooth.
Mm-hmm.
So that it would be the same for water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
This is not that way.
Okay.
It's only water projects are going to only water customers. Now, I want to be very clear. We only have 212 sewer-only customers. So the bulk of your customers are going to be either A, water-only, that's all they have, or they're water and sewer customers.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. You know, the past, there, I think there were about 14,000 water-only customers.
Roughly, yes, ma'am.
But they, they were the ones that got the largest increase. It was 22% to help build a new sewer plant or, you know...
It was spread over there, those customers.
Correct. So because that was done in the past, I just want to verify that is not what you're presenting tonight.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And we heard very clearly that that was a concern that the board had. You wanted those rates reflective of what it was taking for water, what it was taking for sewer.
Thank you.
So we heard that, we made those changes for it.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to confirm.
Mr. Matthews, what did you say on the 212 customers?
We have 212 sewer-only customers. That's really someone who used to have a septic tank. And so they, they now connect to our sewer and maybe they have a well. That's not common. But we have 212 sewer-only customers to rest are either water and sewer or water only. One of the things that the board, and it's hard for us to give you any numbers on this, but if the board makes a decision in the near future that you want to do some of these projects, depending on the level that you want to do, we would suggest that you redo our system development fee study. Because some projects are going to yield a higher system development fee. If, I'll give you an example. If a water treatment plant, if expanding Catawba is something we need to do, which I'm going to tell you, yes, we really are going to need to do that, that's a significant expense. If you build that into your system development fee ordinance, because it's not now, that will change that system development fee for water. I can't tell you how much. Is it another 500, 1,000? But it will change that. So those are things that, once the board gives us some direction, we would highly recommend we revisit that. You can do that study as often as you like. We obviously have to pay for it. You have to do it a minimum, I believe, every five years. But we can redo that study if we feel that it's going to yield higher system development fees to help pay for some of this over time. So that's a point I want to make to the board. Depending on your decisions, those are things we would look for. So one of the things that I thought would also be important to you is, like, what would it do as far as an average bill? And when I say average bill, we're saying the average customer. That's someone who uses about 5,500 gallons in a month. That used to be me before. I was an empty nester. My daughter's not home anymore, so I was closer to that, closer to that 5,500 range. But what you would see is, you know, these are the projected increases on a monthly basis. Is it yearly or monthly?
This is monthly.
This is monthly, on a monthly basis. Now, thank you for those particular scenarios. And if you look down to the bottom, that's pretty significant. You see some high increases. If you were to do F, I mean, we're not trying to hide it, we're going transparent here. There's some significant monthly increases that these individuals would have to endure. Again, unfortunately, it's part of the issue we deal with, how long it takes to build something and how costly it is. It takes eight to 10 years to build a sewer plant. And it doesn't get any expensive. So if you decide you want to build one, it's going to be expensive, and it only gets more expensive the longer we wait, if that's the decision the board makes. So that's one of the reasons why we want to show what's the impact based on the rates. There's an, I did tell you, you know, Site B is in here. That's a big number. It's about 575 million. And that's because that includes that piping first. Remember the last time we talked, we didn't have any idea what piping the discharge would cost. We did have, sorry, Black and Veatch helped us with coming up with some estimates. If we were to have to pipe that sewer discharge to Site A, that gave you a range. I want to say that was in the 40 million range for pumping it. Was it 40 million? Anyway, it was a significant number to be able to pipe that flow from, from where the actual Site B is to the discharge point of Site A. Also, Site B, yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. County Manager, I just want to make sure I heard you correct. You say 575 million?
Yes, sir. Now, I wanted to point out, the reason why it's 575, remember, it's high to start with. It's also escalated for 15 years. So it's an expensive project, and it's expensive because we have to wait a long time if you want to do it. And keep in mind, we have a lease. So the way that lease is structured, unless you decide to do something different, we wouldn't start construction until almost 10 years from now. You have to build your rates in order to collect enough money to be able to cover the debt service.
Gotcha.
So that's why the rates are really high, and that's why the cost is so high. Because it's got an extended timeframe for it. So that's, that's why it's as high as it is. It's not getting cheaper. It's longer out, and we've added the piping into it as well.
And that would include, as you mentioned, discharge up to the previous Site A?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Talked about that. Talked about the system development fee. Talked about the capital, smoothing it as best we could. I mean, that's the crux of what we have. I went through that rather quickly. I know that that's a lot of information. What I would like is for you to, you know, to ask, tell me if there's additional information you need. And you might be, not be able to tell me that today, but think about what additional information do you need so that we can get some direction on where do we go with this to build our budget. And if that means you just send it to me separately, that's fine. If you give that direction to me today, that's okay. But we are going to need some input, you know, before a meeting on the 15th, to be able to understand, like, what do you want to see differently as far as these numbers go, these scenarios go? Is there a different scenario you want to see? We can build it. I just need to know what it is that you want us to look at. Any questions for me? I noticed a lot of information. And it is, it's some eye-opening information. So...
Mr. Chair, I just want to say thank you. Appreciate you putting this together. I think that the modeling that you've got there, based off of the, you know, average household use, I thought that was very good. It really kind of helps put this in perspective for not only us, but the rate payers out there. So, you know, we have to be, I think when we look at this, I think we have to be very concerned with how this affects, you know, someone on a day-to-day basis. It may seem like small money, you know, to some, but it's going to be big money to others. So utility rates, you know, maintain, or continue to be a, a big point of emphasis, you know, for, for us, as well as the people that we serve. But at the same time, we do have to look at some projects because, well, the longevity of our system depends on it.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I'm more inclined to look at things more on the water side than I am to, to add additional capacity at this point. You know, we did address capacity this, well, this previous year, you know, when we voted to increase capacity there at 12 Mile, you know, from seven and a half million gallons per day to nine millions, nine million gallons per day.
Yes, sir.
So, so I would say, for my two cents, my opinion, I would be more inclined to look at water projects at this point and take care of the folks that we have already in this county to improve, you know, service for, for water customers rather than add capacity, which, you know, potentially could bring additional growth with it. But I do appreciate all the information. I think that's been very beneficial. And I look forward to seeing what we can work out by the 15th.
First off, I want to say thank you to the entire team for working on this. This is, this is a team effort. I'm the face of it, but these folks are the ones who've done all the hard work. They've worked on all the models, our STANTEC, our company helping us with this. We couldn't do this without their help. And so, again, I just to be the mouthpiece, they're the ones who actually do all the hard work. And I really appreciate all the work that they do. And I ask them to do a lot. So that's, I really do want to say thank you. We recognize, guys, that this isn't, this is a heavy lift. It is. You guys got some big decisions. One of the things that this board has talked about is potentially doing a general obligation bond for capacity. I'm not saying you do or you don't want to do it. You've talked about that. If that, if this board wants to consider that, this is something we need to know as well. Because we have to build that into. Are you going to have that in 2024? Are you going to wait till 2026? Or not at all? Those are things we need to have some direction and input from the board because we have to build that into how we go about putting it on a bond and how the rate model may or may not change based on those things. So that's all the information I have at this point in time. If you have additional questions or you want to see things that are different, just let me know. We'll get the staff working on it. And then by the 15th, we'll, we'll be back at it and we'll get some input from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
The final item on the business agenda this evening is item 24-203, Appointment of Union County Holman Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. We received an application from Mr. Peter Chang. I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at it. He's applied to be on the Union County Holman Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Any discussion on his app... Any discussion on his application? All in favor of appointing him to the Union County Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee indicate by aye. I'll now recognize the county manager again for his comments.
I think I've said enough. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank the staff for all the great presentations tonight and Sheriff's Office and water and everything else that we heard. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the board for hanging in there. All right, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would say thank you to all the staff members, especially for, for those that hung in with us till the very end. This has been a marathon meeting. We're known to have those from time to time. So, so thank you all for being here. Thank you to, to our Sheriff's Office. I believe that that was very beneficial to, to have that discussion tonight and freely, you know, talk about their needs and the county's needs together. So I do want to touch on Easter there for just a second. You know, we just celebrated Easter. Want to just reiterate that, that, you know, Easter is more about our Lord and Savior rather than, rather than eggs and Easter bunnies and things like that. So, so certainly hope that everybody in the county had a great Easter. Hope that you're having a great spring break this week too because all of our children are out of school. And of course, thank you again to staff for all that you do for us. Thanks.
Agree. I just want to thank our staff for bringing all of this information to us. The report tonight was extremely helpful, in particular, the CIP scenarios that were offered. So many different options, but that particular part was very helpful to me and I appreciate everything that you do to help us reach these decisions. And I also want to thank Sheriff Eddie Cathy and Union County Sheriff Office for being here tonight. We do have the best law enforcement, I believe, in North Carolina, and I saw that for eight years in Union County Public Schools with all of our SROs, including the Monroe Police Department and Waxall and Stallings. But I can't say enough about our Sheriff Department. I truly believe that Union County does have the best in, in the whole state, if not the region. So the information tonight, I think, was a healthy discussion, questions that needed to be asked, questions that have been, you know, going around the county for quite some time. And I just really appreciate them being here to answer those questions. So thanks a lot. Good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Merrill, Commissioner Williams.
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Bowles.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank everyone who was instrumental in making the presentations. I've got three pages of notes, a stack of reading material, a whole lot to sort through, but I signed up for it, so here we go. Just like to finish on a lighter note and say, "Go Wolf Pack."
Well, I think we've got those on each end of the dice up here. But thank you. That concludes the regular meeting. Thank you for all who attended. I move that the board adjourn all those in favor say aye.